I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Farver School Committee for Monday, March 7th. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre.
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizens input, Deb?
We do not.
You do not. Item number three, Committee of the Whole. These are the budget presentations for our elementary schools. I guess we'll start. Superintendent Ponce.
So if I could just open up for a minute, we have our elementary schools presenting today. All of the positions that were last week's, at last week's presentation, all those positions were directly requested by principals. And what they're going to do today is they will share what their needs are as well as, you know, their rationales. So Principal Cobb will kick us off.
Chairman.
Mr. Aguirre, please.
Before we begin with the presentations, I'd like to...
I'm sorry.
I believe we might have gotten an email related to the policies. I haven't had a chance to review it. But I think we need to all be on the same page about what we're here for, what is the role of the school committee, each individual member. And I would like to hear from the superintendent on what her impression is on what our role is. What are we actually voting on? As I said at the last meeting, if the presentation is going to be that the budget is one line item and it's already been basically approved, then I think we should vote on that and know whether that's the case and not waste these fine people's time coming before us for something that we don't have a say in. Personally, I think we need to have some more line items and some core centers. So I'd like to get the superintendent's opinion on that and then discuss it with the committee.
Well, Mr. Aguirre, as we spoke last week during my, at the end of my presentation, that was the initial meeting where we brought forth the budget and requested all the additional Historically, the next step would be that we would bring forth our principals so that they could share their rationale for the positions that they're requesting and how the addition of those positions would move forward. The committee certainly, nothing's been approved yet, so I think that the committee certainly can listen and certainly we are open to feedback from the committee. And then we will make whatever adjustments need to be made. But these, I just want to say that the committee is hearing from, directly from principals in regards to what they feel their needs are in order to move their schools. So I request that the committee, you know, certainly give us feedback and then we will bring the budget forth for approval.
So more specifically, I guess, since I think it needs to be addressed, what exactly would you be submitting to us for approval?
The budget.
The budget, including all the line items?
Right. The total budget.
So, including all the line items. I don't disagree. What the policy that we currently operate under is contrary to that. Would anybody want to disagree that that's the case?
What, Mr. Aguirre, when was that policy written?
What policy?
The policy you're saying is contrary to that. Just if you know what...
Our current, so, so the current policy that we have in the district, you know, there was a meeting held on December 21st of 2020, a special finance committee meeting, to discuss what, at the middle of the year, to say, what are we going to do in the subsequent budgets? This was over a year and a half ago. So at the meeting, I highlighted one section of, of the minutes of the meeting. It states, "Mr. Aguirre asked, 'When the district put together a budget, what was the committee approving?'" "Mr. Almeida, Chief Financial Officer, stated, 'When the committee approved the budget, they were approving the appropriation and the line items.'" That's what was stated on December 21st of 2020. That's the practice that Mr. Almeida follows, Dr. Malone followed. I think that's what the practice that Mrs. Ponce is saying that she's going to follow. My only concern is that the actual policy, which I think the superintendent sent some emails relative to the policies, that is not what happens. So all I'm asking for is that as we move forward, we do what Mr. Almeida suggested. He stated, "The committee approved the budget that we're approving the appropriation and the line items." So when we go through this process, they all, the principals advocate for what they would like. School committee members weigh in. I think we need to add another line item here, we need to take a line item out there. I think that's in the purview and the actual fiduciary responsibility of each committee member to present that forward. We vote on it and that's what would become the budget. So the budget would show at the end of this process, we have 1,000 employees line items, for instance, whatever it is. That's what we vote on. As we proceed forward, we want to add 10 more, we have to make a motion. We want to cut 10 more, we have to make a motion. So all I'm asking for is that we have a policy that actually follows the practice that what we've been implementing here, and they shouldn't conflict.
With all due respect, I disagree with that, Mr. Aguirre, for the simple reason that I don't think we should be adding positions. I think the principals are the people that work in the buildings, they're on the front lines every day. I believe they know what they want, they relay that to the superintendent, who then checks with finance and makes sure we're able to do it. I just think that for us as, who, I mean, I've been in the schools this year already, but I just know that it's not enough time to evaluate who should be doing what, where, and when. It's up to the principals. And I think that if, if they ask the superintendent for a position that they don't get, then we'll move forward and adjust it down the road. But I believe our job is to get to know exactly what's going on in the schools from the principals today, what they asked for, what they got, and move the debate forward. But I think adding positions is not our role. I think that's micromanaging. I think that's one of the things that came out of that 2009 report. I think as a whole right now, the committee is functioning in a professional, thoughtful manner. And I think allowing the principals and the superintendent to set the budgets for their building and the district are the way to go with our support.
So with all due respect, the comment from Mr. Almeida that stated, "The committee approved the budget, they were approving the appropriation," and all that, are you saying that he's wrong and he's telling wrong information?
I don't know what that was an answer to. What was the question?
The question was, "Mr. Aguirre asked, 'When the district put together a budget, what was the committee approving?'" At this point, this was a meeting on December 21st of 2020. You were there. This was a question that was asked at an entire fiscal policy meeting. "Mr. Aguirre asked, 'When the district put together a budget, what was the committee approving?'" "Mr. Almeida stated, 'When the committee approved the budget, they were approving the appropriation and the line items.'" Are you saying that he was wrong?
No, I think that's accurate. I think when you approve a budget of any kind, you're approving what's in the budget. I think if I get a budget from Kevin Aguirre and it's five pages and I look at the bottom line and I say, "Kevin, good job, we're going to spend another $100," I'm approving what you put in there. Now, if down the road I see something that you don't like, as Mr. Almeida does every month when he comes back to us, then we have to adjust, I support that. But at the same time, I have confidence in our principals, I have confidence in our superintendent, and I have confidence in Mr. Almeida. If they're presenting the budget and at a time, as you've done, Mr. Aguirre, and I might disagree with you, but if you have the votes, I'm going to be with you. If you see adjustments and things we should be doing, you and I have kicked around a few of them, I'm not against that. But at the same time, if you approve a budget, I think you're approving all the lines in it.
Yeah, just, I guess what you're telling us is that we're approving a line item, a one, the bottom line number. The superintendent and her principals are going to decide where those line items are. That's what you're, I'm just paraphrasing, but I think that's what you're saying. You're in favor of.
I agree.
One number, and so if the budget is $130 million, I disagree with it. I will challenge you, and I'll challenge Mr. Almeida, I'll challenge anybody in the public. You present to me a budget that adds up exactly to that $132 million, you can't do it, he can't do it. Because it actually leads to, like, some people make more or less, there has to be some flexibility in working with the finance people. It doesn't tie out to exactly what you're saying. But if that's the case, I just want to take a vote on it. Because if that's the case, we're only approving the bottom line. I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. These fine people can go home and have dinner with their families. There's no reason for us to be here for eight more meetings.
Well, again, I obviously respect your opinion and I think, I think that's one way of looking at it, but at the same point, the will of the committee will override you and I, or maybe support you. So if you made a motion...
I'll yield and I'll allow my colleagues to see what they think.
Can I, can I say something?
Okay, hold on a second.
Before that motion?
I yield the floor to my colleagues so we can hear what they say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pereira, please.
I respect everybody's opinion down there and up here. And I've heard Committee Member Aguirre say several times when he'll ask a question or make a point, often you've said, "For clarification for the people at home." So I think that our taxpayers and our parents deserve to listen to these wonderful principles and the rationale in why we're spending money where we're spending it. So I don't think it's a waste of time. It's a waste of time if we sit here and ask, you know, questions that we should have the answers to or questions that maybe aren't valid, that's a waste of time. But I don't think it's a waste of time for the community and people who are, you know, using their tax dollars to fund our schools to have an understanding of why the money's being spent, you know, where it is. That's one. Second is I understand what you're saying, Committee Member Aguirre, that you want to go line by line, I understand that. That is not what I got from reading the policy personally. I got something a little different. And also, when we had the meeting with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, this came up. And I'm pretty, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that that gentleman made it clear that our job here is to approve a budget, not to tell the superintendent necessarily where the money's to be spent. Now, that's not to say that we can't give opinions, we absolutely should and can, but to say that I know more about the in and outs of running Spencer Borden than, you know, than Principal Cobb, I think is absurd. So obviously, you know, I think it's important, in my opinion, maybe because I'm new here, that I hear the rationale behind these things. I think it can be pretty quick. We can get the information out from the principals, we can get them home quickly. People in Fall River can understand what's going on here. I think it can be an easy process, but we're spending time right now on this. So with that, I yield.
Anything further? Ms. Roderick?
So I don't disagree with the notion that what's being said in one area is different from what the policy reads. Right? So if a policy is open to interpretation, then that means that we've got to clarify that policy. So for the sake of somebody who's new, like, I need to understand what I'm doing. I'm not suggesting ever that I know better than what a principal knows in their building. I, I wouldn't want somebody coming into my place of business and telling me how to spend my money because I know my staff, I know my kids, I know what's going to work better in that realm. But I need to know on this end what I'm doing. Right? And so if the policy and then what's happening in practice are two different things, I think that's what just has to be clarified.
Oh, Ms., are you done?
Oh, I yield, sorry.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I'll just be real quick. I mean, I agree with what Council Committee Woman Pereira said, as well as the chairman. I mean, I, I look forward to these nights that the principals come here and talk to us about what their plans are for the following, for the next year, upcoming year, this year, and all the programs that are going on. I mean, I think too that the community, the community looks forward to that because, you know, we're going right now for Ms. Cobb at Spencer Borden. I'm sure there's got a lot of the parents at Spencer Borden that are going to be watching tonight and, and what you're going to be saying and what the, you know, what the culture is at the school, the environment at the school, how everything's working out there. So I think that these are good to have. I don't know about anyone seconding Mr. Aguirre's motion, but I look forward to this and I hope we do hear from you tonight. So, thank you.
Mr. Aguirre?
I'll defer if anyone else has any, my colleagues have anything to say, I defer to them before I get a chance to talk again.
They'd raise their hands if they did.
Somebody mumbled something I can't hear.
I said they would raise their hands if they did.
Yeah, I'm offering it up. If anybody would like, I'm being respectful.
Mr. Aguirre.
Would anybody else like to say anything other than me? That's all.
You have the floor.
Mr. Bailey's raising his hand, just for the record.
Okay.
No, I was just saying, you know, the same as some of my colleagues are saying, you know, I figure you guys know best as far as what goes on in your school. For me personally, I would love to, to hear you guys, you know, listen, listen to some of the people on the stage. I think the biggest thing is, obviously, yeah, things matching up. When we look at the policy and stuff, you know, like, you know, Ms. Pereira was saying here, you know, the biggest thing for us is staying accord. But for me, you know, after hearing this, it is for me, for me, one of the bigger things is like digesting this and seeing what goes on. You know, we will have our opinions and things to say like that. I mean, you guys run your show, but for me personally, you know, I would like to listen and see where that goes, but from there, you know, I would like time to digest this. I don't, for me personally, I don't like making decisions just based upon what I hear, so I'm not sure, I mean, you know, if we're voting today or whatever the case may be, but that's where I stand.
You're done? You're done, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larrabee?
Just quickly, I agree especially with Mr. Hart. I look forward to listening to all of you, especially in the times that we just kind of went through together as a committee, as a district, as principals. I look forward to hearing what's going on in these schools, especially right now. I don't ever feel that we should have any say in what positions you need in your schools. I, I respect every single one of you, the work you've done, and I know there's been a lot of hard work that went into these, these presentations. And I would never, I would think it would be such disrespect shown if we would hit that gavel today and adjourn and not listen to some of the good things that are going on in your schools, the positive things that are going on in your schools. And that's what I look forward to hearing, why I look forward to hearing from you tonight. I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, let me just make something very clear to the public, to the people that are sitting here. I'm happy to listen to exactly what you're doing and all that. But I got elected as a school committee member to do a job, and part of that job is approving a budget. Part of a job of a school committee member is to prove a budget, including the various line items within, so that we can look at the strategies and to say, well, we'd like to go down this road, we'd like to go down a different road. That's all I'm suggesting. So you're, I value your opinion, I'm going to enjoy listening to the stuff. But when I, when I listen, am I listening as a school committee member to say, am I just hearing it like I could watch it at home? Or is it a participation type thing? Are we going to take your information and then try to glean from it? Where are you at? What are you trying to do? What can we, what kind of systems can we put in place to hold the superintendent accountable to make sure that we're getting the things that we need to get done for our children to get those things done? It's more than just listening. Being elected to the school committee is more than just listening to you. It's participating in the process. When we look at a budget, we should be approving a budget with more line items than just one bottom line number. That's what I'm trying to say. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve a budget with more than one bottom line number. That's in the form of a motion, that we definitely should have more than one number. So my, my motion is that we approve a budget with more than one bottom line number.
Not hearing a second. Anything else, Mr. Aguirre?
So, point of clarification. Mr. Chairman, if a member says, makes a motion, whoever it is, they make a motion, the chairman's duty and responsibility is therefore to say, "We have a motion by Mr. so-and-so, is there a second to the motion?" That's the typical practice of how we would go about it. If nobody then seconds it, so be it. But as chairman, that's the first basic duty. If somebody makes a motion, you say, "Does anybody second the motion?" My motion is very clear. Well, my motion was very clear. That we should have more than one. If nobody seconds it, so be it. Then that means everybody that didn't second it thinks that we should have one bottom line number. That's all I'm trying to clarify.
Okay, Mr. Aguirre, I really can't thank you enough. I appreciate your help. I've never said that, but I'm glad you chose this time to tell me. I will try to do it going forward. Anything further? Then I say we can...
So I guess, I guess that doesn't apply. Person makes a motion, chairman says, "This person X made a motion, is there a second on the motion?" At this point, if nobody says anything, there is no second to the motion, we'll move on.
Any seconds? Moving on?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for helping us, I appreciate it. Okay, so now we'll get down to the good part of the meeting, and I agree with my colleagues, it's nice to hear from you guys. I hope, I hope, I hope things are going well in all the schools. And I'm going to follow it right after the order you have here. Ms. Cobb, Spencer Borden, bring us up to date.
I will. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank the committee for hearing my budget requests tonight. I've been the proud principal of Spencer Borden Elementary School for the last nine years, and I am here tonight to present my budget request on behalf of my school community. Spencer Borden has 588 students in grades pre-K through 5. We have 29 classrooms, which include nine substantially separate classes, with our students with disabilities being our largest subgroup at around 30%. We've had a strong focus this year on both accelerating improvements with academics while also supporting social, emotional needs and attendance. The positions I am presenting support these improvement efforts. My first request is changing our .5L teacher to a full-time L teacher. The service delivery times have increased due to the language level of students and the increased service hours required to meet their needs. A full-time L teacher would allow us to fully meet the services of our L learners within our building. I'm asking for two additional grade-one para-professionals, which will provide each grade-one classroom with a full-time para. Data has shown us that since March 2020, our younger students have struggled, both with academic and social, emotional needs. These paras would allow us to provide more interventions, run small groups, help students complete independent tasks while the teacher runs groups, and also implement behavior supports such as taking breaks or visiting the sensory room. I'm asking for three teacher lead positions, which is a stipend positions. Currently, we have three lead teachers with a structure of a K through 2 lead, a 3 through 5 lead, and a special education lead, which the committee granted last year. Adding three additional lead teachers would allow us to have six lead teachers, one at each grade level. This directly supports our school improvement efforts of building leadership capacity, and these teacher leaders are great supports to other teachers in the building and assist with planning and providing professional development. This year, I'm asking for a community facilitator. This person would fill the role of support and outreach to families for things such as parent outreach, events, and attendance. The ideal candidate for this position would be bilingual in order to help support the needs of our Spanish and Portuguese families. I'm asking for another school adjustment counselor. Currently, we have two school adjustment counselors who oversee around 300 students each and service around 40 students for pull-out services. The addition of another SAC will increase the ability to provide preventative services such as increased social skills groups and also strengthen our attendance outreach. I'm asking for an instructional support liaison. As a strategy within our school improvement plan, we have created intervention blocks across grade levels. An additional ISL position would allow us to expand our ability to provide support to our lowest 25% of students. And lastly, I have one conversion of a grade-four teacher to a grade-five teacher. This conversion is based on class size. We currently have an additional fourth-grade class, and this will become a fifth-grade class for next year. So those are my requests, and I open up to the committee four questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Any question? Ms. Larrabee?
So why are there so many fourth graders this year at Spencer Borden?
Several years ago, we opened additional kindergarten classroom when the district needed, we had an open classroom, they did need additional K-class based on school numbers, so every year we've been rolling up that position.
Okay. And then next year it's going to roll into the fifth and then be done with that extra classroom?
Yes.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
Ms. Pereira?
Hi, thank you, Principal Cobb.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question. I noticed an alarming increase in chronically absent rate.
Yes.
What, could you, what do you think that is?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So we have been looking at that data that is based on current number of absences so far. So when this data was produced, it was around 10 absences. We have an attendance team that meets every week that consists of myself and the school adjustment counselor, attendance officer, et cetera. When we look at those, more than half of those absences are based on either COVID-related or medically excluded, medically excused absences. So I think we've seen a big increase because of that. We also have seen that, rightfully so, parents have been more cautious about sending kids to school when there's sniffles and this thing and that thing. So, you know, I think that, that definitely speaks to the big increase at our school and most schools.
Thank you. That's it, I yield.
You're welcome.
Anything further from Ms. Cobb at Spencer Borden?
One question?
Mr. Aguirre?
Just a comment on the last piece. This is going to be a theme throughout. When we started off the budget, the school year, we talked about setting goals on attendance and the like. We also had information from probably the spring where we were given stuff that was not accurate. Everyone said, "Oh, those aren't accurate because of COVID and all this." At that time, many members of the committee had asked for updated information on, relative to that, including desegregated out COVID, not COVID, this and that. I haven't personally seen that from any of the schools, so I'd like to get an update at, not obviously right now, but relative to where the attendance is at across all of our schools, because I think we made that a goal of the superintendent, therefore I think she made it a goal with her principal. So I think that's valid information to go. The piece about the school adjustment counselor, I don't have it in front of me, but the analysis that was done relative to when we added a few, was this part of that?
No, this was actually after the fact. When, when you initially had, when that vote was taken, Ms. Costa and I sat down and went through the needs of the district and allocated the Saks at that time. This was after the fact, as Ms. Cobb was creating her budget.
Okay, so, and this might also not be related to Spencer Borden, but across the board. So the way that I look at it is, we need those services for the kids now, and obviously everybody's going to probably say similar things because I think, there's not that many counselors, there aren't enough counselors, quite frankly, in here, but if we're hearing from principals now, or we're going to hear from principals now, that we need more school adjustment counselors based on the needs of our children, I'm having a hard time balancing that with the fact that this committee voted to hire 10 adjustment counselors and they weren't one of them at that time. So I'm having a hard time of, like, how does it, the need that you're referring to doesn't exist July 1 of next year, of this year. I think the need you're talking about is based on experience of what's happening in your building now. So I'm having a hard time figuring out why, not you personally, but by any principal would be bringing us forward something to say they need another adjustment council for services, but we didn't hire up to the 10 that this committee requested. That's what I'm having a hard time.
If I can just speak to that, Mr. Aguirre, those positions are posted like everybody else was struggling to get people to fill all of those positions. Certainly, I have absolutely no problem swapping out one of those. At the time, we said seven Saks, three guidance. I have absolutely no problem saying it's going to be eight Saks, two guidance, or even making an adjustment for those three guidance. We are struggling to get them all filled.
I can totally respect that. All I would ask then is, and I don't believe there's many in here, like, I think Ms. Cobb might be one of the few that are in the new additions. What I would suggest, just thinking about it, is that if there's a need at Spencer Borden for a counselor, and we're going to approve that counselor in July, I'd rather we approve that counselor now as part of the 10. Ms. Cobb, her team, her teachers, her staff, might be able to recruit some people, might be able to line somebody up now rather than July 1. Obviously, it's principal's prerogative of who they hire, so I just think front-loading it, it makes more sense to me than waiting until July 1. And I'm going to say that same thing about a few other things as the budget year goes on. Why wait till July 1 because the need is here now, not then? So whatever you can do, you have the authority to change that.[1798.83] I would just suggest that sooner rather than later makes sense. With that, I yield.
Anything further on Spencer Borden? I, I did wanna, uh, piggyback on what, um, Ms. Pereira said. Is your attendance going up now, or was it weaker at the beginning of the year? You know, I mean, that's, that's a yearly stat. I'm wondering if it, it's doing what I think a lot of the schools are doing. They're kinda working their way back.
The attendance has been much better. Actually, our rate for last week was 92.5%. So we're seeing definite increases in kids coming to school.
I think taking the mask off may help a little bit too, so. Again, I appreciate it, and thank you, Ms. Cobb. Next up, uh, Ms. Witty from Viveras.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to begin by thanking you for the opportunity to present and advocate for the Viveras School. I'll take a moment and just to give you a brief overview of some of the work we have done this year. I think this will give a picture of where we are heading and what our efforts have been directed toward. This year at the Viv, we have rolled out the dual-language program, and our kindergarten have been working to make it a strong program and option for families interested in promoting bilingualism in their children. This will continue next year, adding a first grade and welcoming in a new cohort for kindergarten. The Viveras School also services a strand of special education classrooms focusing on students with emotional and behavioral impairments. This year, we have worked to strengthen this program through the addition of our cluster coordinator and instituting programs to grow students socially, such as student internship opportunities for our scholars. Last year, we converted our coach positions to department heads, and we have truly established an academic leadership team that is focused on achievement and providing quality instruction and curriculum to our school. The work has targeted the creation and growth of a shared vision among staff and students. We are building the capacity of our teacher leads and educators to promote engagement, strong instruction, and high expectations in every single thing that we do. We have been excited to see the fruition of our work throughout this year, and we're very confident that progress in our state assessment data will show as well. On the SEL front, we have established a solid RTI system that provides staff with support and structure through collaboration when struggling with challenging behavior or emotional concerns. We have also put into place some great leadership opportunities for our upper-grade students with a student council and a peer mediation mentorship program. It has been about sharing the responsibility with our students to have a climate of support and inclusi- I can never say this word correctly, inclusivity. All of the programs above have an underlying push to engage our students and make being present at school a priority and a source of pride. In addition to those programs, our SEL team has been working feverishly to connect with the families and provide students the support needed to make it to school every day. We have recently seen a drastic uptick in our attendance, and we are hoping to leverage this uptick to improve on chronically absent and attendance rate. We're hopeful that for the rest of the year, we'll continue to see improvement in this area. And to continue the work that we've embarked on this year, to further see our vision progress, we have some new positions at our school that we're gonna advocate for. The first one is the conversion of our instructional support liaison to a para-professional interventionist. The ISL position just has not proven to be effective for our school, and we'd like to convert it to a para-professional to aid our interventionists in their work. A math interventionist, we currently do not have an interventionist to work with students that are falling below grade level in mathematics. We have a large student population, and our math scores in the past two years have shown a steady decline. Only 10% of our MCAS students were meeting or exceeding expectations in 2021. We are working to fill the learning gaps, and they've just been exasperated by the pandemic, and we need qualified staff to address that critical need. We are asking for a health and wellness teacher. Given the size of our school, we are currently, I believe, the largest K-through-five school in the district with 724 students. It has proven challenging to provide students with quality curriculum and learning experiences during their specials period once a day. A health educator would provide a once-a-week opportunity for students to be exposed to explicit teaching of health and wellness. We envision this addressing many of the social-emotional issues that our students are facing with SEL learning on the forefront of the curriculum being provided. We're asking for a bilingual community facilitator. The community facilitator position is essential to Viveras School. In the past five years that I've been at Viveras, our population of students whose first language is not English has increased from 16% to 39%. The enormous growth just dictates that we have staff members to effectively communicate and increase the sense of community within our families and our school. We're asking for an additional L mainstream teacher. The growth of our L population, the addition of a dual-language program, and an increase in the newcomer population has stretched our L staff very thin. The state mandate of service time and based on proficiency levels, it's very difficult to meet with the current staffing levels. An additional teacher would provide the school with flexibility of scheduling and offer an opportunity for true co-teaching in our mainstream DLE classrooms. We're converting two of our first-grade classrooms into the DLA, DLE language program. Our foundational classroom, as well as one of the mainstreams, will be converted since our kindergarten, so we'll be rolling up to first grade. And we're asking for a sped para-professional. This is a float position. Our self-contained special education classrooms provides, provide services for social-emotional disabilities. The structures and systems in place are highly effective, but require trained staff. If a staff member is absent, assisting in crisis, in a meeting, or simply having lunch, we need to have fully trained staff that are familiar with the structure of the program and available to fill in and keep a consistent environment for our students. These are the positions we're advocating for this year, and I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Ms. Larivee?
If I can talk and stop coughing for one second. Thank you, Ms. Witty. The ISL position, thank you for, uh, being honest with that. It just doesn't fit in the school. Could you tell me why that position isn't really?
We've had the position now for two years, and to be quite honest, we've only been able to fill it maybe three months out of those two years. The two people that we had put into the position stepped up and moved into, um, teaching positions, and we just haven't been able to keep it filled or effective.
Is there a need for the position, though? Or, I mean, you're functioning-
I think that we can meet the, with a para-professional interventionist, we can meet the needs that we're using the position for.
Okay. Thank, um, also, how's the dual-language program going? A little update on that?
It's great. We invite you to come in and visit. They just recently had a writing, um, celebration in Spanish, which was very exciting. So, yes, it's going very well.
Enjoying it? Teachers are enjoying it?
They are. The children are enjoying it even more.
Beautiful. So my last question, the bilingual community facilitator, any responsibilities on them for the attendance aspect to help with that as well?
Absolutely. They'd be a part of the attendance team and be communicating and connecting with those families.
Thank you. I yield.
Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Correct me if I'm wrong. Did you say the Spanish-speaking population went from 16 to 39%?
Our students whose first language is not English, so that could be Spanish, it could be Portuguese.
Okay. Um, how many educators do we have, um, in your school that speak multiple languages?
Are we saying teachers or including, um? Oh, jeez. Um, off the top of my head, I'd say we have about five or six within our building.
And then the next question was kinda just a follow-up. In regards to the, um, community advocate person, how would that position look? Is that like, like an after-school, like a dual role, or like?
The community facilitator?
Correct.
Uh, that's somebody who'd be stationed in our building full-time. That person would be communicating with, um, any family, you know, that has an issue communicating in English, obviously, and really working to engage those families. So getting them in for meetings, getting them in for events, really communicating their child's, students' progress, just keeping them in the loop and feeling a part of our school community.
Like, in terms of, like, hours? Is that just, like, during school hours or?
It is. It's a full-time school position, yes.
Okay. I yield.
Uh, Ms. Pereira?
You have three adjustment counselors currently. Do you know how many students they serve?
One of those positions is not currently filled. It was a bilingual student adjustment counselor position that we had added last budget, and we just have, unfortunately, not been able to fill that position. But, I mean, if we, are you asking how many they service for pull-out services or for IEP services?
Yes.
We have-
Like, what does a caseload or amount of students look like for one of those school adjustment counselors?
Well, I hesitate to answer that, because it could look very different from week to week. Our student adjustment counselors take social skills groups as needed. Whenever a problem arises, they're, they're pulling students for counseling services or... So we have, on their IEP caseload, they might have 30 each. I'm, I'm approximating. But that's not to say that those are the only 30 students that they see in the course of a day. That's for sure.
Sure. And my next question was, which you might have just answered, are any of them bilingual?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so they all are?
Oh, no, my student adjustment counselor. I thought that meant the students that we see.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No. I currently do not have a bilingual student adjustment counselor.
Okay. And what do you think, and obviously, this is just your opinion, but what do you think the challenges of finding somebody for that position that's, that's bilingual?
I wish I could tell you, to be honest. I've been searching and searching, um, literally almost every other day, looking to see if we have new applicants that can be called and interviewed. I just, I had two people in line, and they had accepted positions in other districts, so...
Did they express to you why they chose to go to another district?
Not particularly, no. They just had said that they had, you know, taken another position.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bailey was talking about, as far as the Hispanic, you know, language, how many teachers we have that are speaking that language. It just sparked my interest a little bit with superintendent. When we had that community engagement subcommittee meeting, I asked you about the population of the Hispanic, uh, community in our district, and you said that it was, it was very high and that you're trying to, um, hire as many people as we can. But, and I know it's a high priority, it's a front burner, not a front burner, but how are we doing with that? Because I think that's a very, that's a very important piece to the budget year and to the, also to the students that are in the Hispanic community.
I think there's not a principal that's in this room or in our schools that doesn't look for bilingual staff or staff that actually looks like the students that we serve, right? We, you know, it's, it's a matter of who is applying for our jobs. We're, we're trying to recruit, um, do a better job with recruiting and bringing people into the city, but it is a, a challenge. Could not agree more. We need more bilingual people in the district. We need more people of color. We need, we need our, our adult population to mirror our children.
Right. Is there anything else that, I mean, that you, the leadership team has, has met? And is there any other, um, maybe steps to take that you may not have taken so far?
Well, Mr. Coogan is working on creating some recruitment, doing some active recruiting. We're gonna host a recruitment fair, and we're actually reaching out to some of the colleges to, to try to get a jump on, uh, the recruitment.
Okay. And what Ms. Pereira was saying about the, uh, you mentioned the teachers leaving, employees leaving the district. Mr. Coogan, Mr. Coogan, do we, are we doing those, uh, when people, when the teachers are leaving the district, are we doing that interview? How, now, do we get, are we getting any copies of those? Can we get? Okay. And can you maybe, uh, update us on every time, you know, when there's a big, like, maybe if there's 10 people leaving? And how, are they, are they filling out the interview? Are they taking part in it? Okay. All right. I yield. Thank you.
We can include that information regularly.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Rajics?
So this is a little bit unrelated to that, but do we ever use student adjustment counselor interns? So that way, they're in here and then primed, potentially? Okay. Because I know that the, the field of, um, SAC interns is actually a lot smaller than what it used to be too. Those programs are actually, um, they're struggling to find folks that are going directly into them. So, you know, I, I always go to interns. It's my, my first.
We have interns at several of our schools, but you're right, um, they're fewer.
Interns are my favorite. Um, so I just wanna understand. So right now, your SACs are running at about 350 kids. If, if you split the school in two, they're running at about 350 kids.
Right. And in addition to that, though, we do have a social worker that services just our, um, special education classrooms.
I'm sorry, there was what?
A social worker who's, uh, who services just our special education classrooms.
Okay, but that person's specific to your special ed classrooms. Are there other duties that the SACs are currently doing that can be filtered out?
No, our, our, our SACs work primarily with students all day long. They each have one lunch, which is 20 minutes long. That's their only duty. And I think they enjoy that time to connect with kids, to be honest, so...
No, I think there's a lot of value in that, in having SACs. It just can't be their, obviously, their overall responsibility.
No, that's, that's their only one, yeah.
Just trying to brainstorm for you, that's all. Because 350 kids per SAC, you know, really, you can't do anything with that.
And, um, I have to say, um, they do an amazing job.
Oh, I'm sure.
Every, uh, they're, they're working constantly with children, so.
But if we wanna retain folks, then we've gotta work on that number. And I know that that's not an easy fix right now, but with that, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre?
Couple of questions. Uh, as I'm looking at the budget, you had said you wanna convert an ISL position to a para-professional position.
Yes.
When I look at the amount, I, I think that the ISL gets paid more than the para-professional. And I'm wondering why wouldn't the ISL be allowed to do intervention? Is that?
The ISL was doing intervention. We just can't find the person to fill the ISL position. We've had it for two years, and as I said, we've only been able to fill it for maybe three or four months.
So you've had a vacancy for two years in a position and?
With the exception of four months, yes.
I can't hear you.
With the exception of those four months, it was filled, yes.
Yep. So what's the issue with, I just don't understand why you can't get anybody? Is nobody applying, or just nobody that meets your?
We've had, the first person that we had in the position moved on to a teaching position within our building. And then the second person that we had found a position at another school in our district as a therapist, a behavior therapist.
So that was like from two years ago?
Uh, that was this year.
And, and since then, you've been trying to fill, just you can't find anybody to apply?
Correct.
All right. The, um, it just, to me, it would make sense to get paid more. Like, I'd wanna get paid more, not less, but maybe you're gonna have a hard time finding any para-interventions too. I don't know, but that's just the first thing that popped out. Are there any position cuts in your school?
No.
So you're, you're keeping everybody that's currently working, working?
Correct, with the exception of the conversions.
And the conversion, it says conversion, right? Like the?
Yes.
The, um, talk about the SACs, uh, I guess, I'm gonna be a broken record on this. You had mentioned something about a, a grant person is working in your school as a social worker or something? Or is that what you just said about?
I, I have a social worker who's been with us for, um, we have this, the social-emotional, um, classroom strand for classrooms, and she services those classrooms.
And that's, so that's not on your page, your page of, of, uh?
The overviews?
Yeah, the overview page. That's, is that because it's a grant and it's separate?
It's because it's a social worker. It's not.
I'm not sure if she's on, in Mr. Loche's budget, or if she's in our?
She's, I believe, on my budget under Title I.
In Title I, okay. Title I budget.
Okay. So previously, multiple years, I've asked that truth in advertising. We get, and when we get something from a school, we get everything, including grants and everything else to be included on these lists. I specif-, not for you, this is not meant for the principals. This is meant for the administration. And I've asked continually, we need to know what the whole thing is for each of the people at a school. Looking back at the number, so we had a bilingual SAC that couldn't get filled for the entire school year?
Correct.
So, Madam Superintendent, that's about $80,000 in the budget, I would assume? That couldn't be filled. What has happened, what happens when that happens?
It's, it's, she's been actively recruiting, so if she found somebody tomorrow, we would hire her so that, that money's still there and allocated for the position.
So do principals get the flexibility to say, "Okay, I can't find a SAC, but I'm going to find three other people that are gonna do permanent sub, para"? Any, like, if we can't find them, rather than just say, "Let's leave that 80 grand blank", what other children at Viveras getting for $80,000 in services in that budget? If that's just a zero, and then at the end of the year, we'll transfer it to HEAT. You understand what I'm saying? Like, when is the point of, that we say, "Okay, we, we're trying to find, we can't find, so now we need an extra para, an extra this", create a position, create an ISL? Like, it just seems to me, watching this, that we... The needs at this school are greater than the school we just talked about in a lot of ways, in my opinion. Just in South End, it's a different type of demographic. Not saying Spencer Borden doesn't have the needs, but we're gonna lower the caseload to 195, uh, for the SACs at Spencer Borden. I agree with that. Let me be clear. I agree with that. That's, the number should be. But 350, or 357, you know, to one, or ta- But three hundred and fifty, or three hundred and fifty-seven, you know, to one, or take out the couple of kids from the, that the social worker services, that's just too high. Vivera School needs another counselor, whether it's, another school adjustment counselor, whether it's a bilingual speaking or not.
But, Mr. Aguirre, the reason why it's three fifty to one is because she has an open position. She has three SAC positions allotted to her, so it would be a lower ratio, it's only because she hasn't found the position. It, it certainly, I agree with you, that's way too high.
What I'm saying is double, I guess, I wasn't very clear, so...
So you're saying...
Seven fourteen divided by three is two thirty-eight. So even at the, if she was able to hire the bilingual person, she's still at almost fifty more kids on the caseload per counselor than at Spencer-Borden. What I'm suggesting is, she needs both. So you say, okay, we need the bilingual, we're trying to find it, but in lieu of that, we need to either, A, hire an additional one, so that for the year, maybe we should have changed it from bilingual, we can't find anybody after a month or two, then we need to pull the trigger on a, on a non-bilingual speaking one to get the services in for the children. Then we go from there. But right now, it seems like, in my opinion, on top of these other things, we should be looking at another school adjustment counselor for the Vivera School. When I say needs, I just, if you look at the high needs, I mean, that Spencer-Borden was high, too, so it's ninety-something, eighty-something. We have, all of our children have needs, but when I look at, and some of the children are at that, are at the Vivera School, have some serious needs, and they're trying to do the best they can with them, I think we should give them more, a school adjustment counselor or some other. If we can't find the counselors, let's come up with some other way to get other folks in to help with those, run groups, different level stuff, but it, it just pains me to see these numbers, they're way too high, and I don't think we're gonna get, we're not gonna get the results that we need to get if we don't, unless we make a change like that. With that, I yield.
If I could just clarify, Miss Aguirre, you mentioned about the social worker, it is in Ms. Principal Witty's budget, it's at the, the last page, it, all the positions that are in, in the grant are listed there, so in, in her, in the budget folder.
Right.
If you're looking...
The reason why I say it, I mean, if I'm looking, I, I don't have my glasses that I now need. We have on this sheet that looks like this, across the district that I've been hopping on for the last two years. If I look under, there, I'm trying to see, and I can't, whether it shows up, but I think, we've talked about this, we, I shared the thing with you, I think this committee would be very well-served to have one that says counseling services, because we're calling them social worker, we're calling them student support coordinator. I think we need to really see that in a clear picture, so we don't have the debate, I think it's just gonna be clear. I'm hoping that it's on here, I just can't read it right now, it's too small. With that, I yield, thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Witty, good luck at Vivera. Mr. Lenz, at Sylvia?
Thank you. Thank the committee for letting me speak tonight and represent Sylvia Elementary School. This is my fourth year as principal at Sylvia. Our enrollment is around seven hundred, and we house the sub-separate language-based strand, we have seven language-based classrooms, we also have a pre-kindergarten program as well. A big part of our work at Sylvia, since I came on four years ago, was providing systems that would allow our students and staff to operate effectively and efficiently, and we are, we've had a lot of success in structuring those outlets for students and teachers as well. This school year, we have three main areas of focus, the first being fostering a sense of belonging for our students and families. This is very important, coming off of a year and a half of a very unstable school setting, from hybrid models to fully being at home, and then coming back into a school year with some of our students not being in person for quite a long time. Within that area of focus, we did a lot of work at welcoming back families and really taking that time at the beginning of the school year to make food, students feel welcome and families feel welcome, going over expectations, high expectations, and setting a clear path for success for our students. Also, under that area of focus, we've been focusing on our social-emotional learning and really providing professional development for our teachers, so that they can provide those opportunities for students within the classroom, things such as academic choice, student goals, student reflection, that allows a student to have a voice in their learning. Our second area of focus has been on monitoring students' understanding and achievement. One of the systems that we have in place that is operating this school year is our teacher assistance team, that allows our teachers to come together and support each other and talk about students' needs. And under, and under that system as well, we've been developing our balance assessment system, which allows teachers to have not only horizontally-aligned data points, but also vertically-aligned data points, so that we can chart not only achievement, but growth and success with our students. And our third area of focus has been assuring grade-appropriate instruction, but also adjusting our practices needed. We've been very fortunate, as the other elementary schools in the district, to have fully implemented the Wonders reading program, literacy program, and also illustrative math. So with those wonderful resources, we've had the opportunity to have discussions around our approach to teaching, reading and writing, and our approach to teaching mathematics. And we've also had a STEM team come together this school year and develop STEM units of study that have been implemented in our classrooms. As we move forward, we're asking for a few new positions at Sylvia's school, the first being the addition of a special ed inclusion teacher. Currently, we have five special ed inclusion teachers, we actually added one a few years ago. We're asking for a sixth for a few reasons. One, it would benefit schedules and the ability for teachers, special ed teachers, and for regular ed teachers, to really co-teach together. The second would be, it would allow for a special ed liaison at each grade level. That liaison would really be able to become a content expert for that grade level. Again, just adding additional expertise when it comes to a collaborative teaching model. The second position that we're asking an additional support with is language-based classroom paraprofessionals. Currently, we have one language-based paraprofessional in each language-based classroom, and we also have a floating paraprofessional. We're asking for the additional paraprofessionals, because it would help immensely with pushing students into the inclusion setting. Our goal is always to have students in the inclusion setting when it is appropriate, so the additional para would allow for one paraprofessional to go with a student or group of students, and then still leave another paraprofessional in the classroom to support the classroom teacher. We are also asking for the addition of early childhood paraprofessionals. We have seen a lot of success with the addition of a pre-K paraprofessional, and we've also seen a lot of success with our kindergarten paraprofessionals. We know that early childhood, one of the main goals is to build independence in our students, so by adding that additional paraprofessional, it, it allows for a lot more targeted, small-group instruction in those very formative, early childhood years. And the last position that we're asking for to be added is the community facilitator. Similar to Ms. Cobb and Ms. Witty, we believe this position would allow for a greater connection between home and school, and also bridge that gap that sometimes exists when we have attendance problems. So that person would also play a vital role in our attendance goal and on our attendance team. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Lenz? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just the paper that we get in front of us for budget positions, I think you mentioned like a liaison, and whatever that last one was, it's not on our sheet here. I'm not sure if I'm missing something, or is it a conversion, is this...
No.
Sure, so the, the special ed inclusion teacher would serve as a liaison at each grade level?
The community facilitator's not on the rationale sheet.
Okay.
We'll revise it.
But is that just this, an oversight?
It's an oversight from, yes, all, all schools are gonna be asking for a community facilitator across all, the schools that don't have, currently have one.
Okay, so, I think when we, when we do get those, if they're in the future, it would be helpful for us to get that explanation ahead of time, so that it's not one school asking for it. It sounds like that, it sounds like that's a district initiative that you came up with with your team, to say that each school should have a community facilitator.
Exactly. We talked about it, the budget thing, and they all put them in there, except for, this one is omitted, but, yes.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that I'm against that. What I'm suggesting, though, I've looked at the, some of these documents, and some of the things that people are asking for are not necessarily that principal asking for, it's that yourself, we've asked for things to, to demand that, you know, classrooms have that, so it would just help to know that it doesn't look like he's asking for an extra thing. That's really not, it's, you're trying to get uniformity across the district with all that, so I don't necessarily disagree. When I look at the chart here, it looks like you have three adjustment counselors and one behavior therapist?
Correct.
For seven hundred students, so I, personally, I count those as four...
Okay.
Social-emotional professionals, that's what I think they should be. So you're at a one seventy-five to one ratio. But then at one point, I read in here that you have seven substantially separate classrooms.
Correct.
And who services those classrooms?
So a special ed classroom teacher, and then there is also a paraprofessional within that classroom.
How about support? Like, support, I meant, like, do you have a cluster coordinator?
No.
Do you have anybody, as the other school did, relative to a, and it might be that's different needs in the classroom, but you don't have anybody other than these four folks that are gonna cover those substantially separate classrooms? So if I had a school with seven hundred students without seven substantially separate classrooms, the one seventy-five to one might seem different than one that does have seven classrooms of substantially separate...
Correct.
Needs. You get what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand.
So, so I think that that number sounds good, I think we should personally tease out what supports are needed amongst those classrooms. What you had mentioned about you'd have a para in and then one can go to the classroom, I totally support that. I'm hoping that it would be maybe one to two, or, because technically it could be one to one if the person's out, but when I see that kind of number, I think we need to have a, and we'll have a subcommittee meeting to kind of go over, making sure that we're supporting the classrooms that have the most need as well. It's not all about numbers, I'm gonna keep asking about numbers, but there's also backstory to different needs, and that's why I was mentioning the one seventy-one figure. Your chronically absent rate is again fifty-one percent already?
Correct.
So that's part of the same discussion, these numbers are just, they're just, they're just too high.
Right.
So I think they need further explanation. So when we look at this, if I'm, like, this is a public document, so this, all of these forms are gonna go out to the public.
Correct.
If anybody gets a hold of these forms, and they're gonna see every one of our schools has kids, has more than fifty percent, or close to fifty percent of our children are chronically absent. At that point, without a further explanation, we have some serious problems with absenteeism, the way I'm reading this. So that's just not necessarily meant for you, sir, but I think across the district, we gotta get, we gotta get real on some of these things. With that, I yield.
Ms. Rogers?
So, I, I just have a question about how we were managing this before. So you're asking for three additional language-based classroom paras, so that way we can work on, you know, better getting our kids out into the general ed settings? How are we doing that now with only one para?
It was challenging, for sure, but what we do is we, we have coverages from other paraprofessionals who would go into that classroom and support, so that the para that's in the classroom who has a relationship with the student is either to go, is allowed to go into that inclusion setting.
Okay, so, right now, do, is that how we're managing paras across the building? I, I'm just asking to understand, this isn't a criticism. Are they all floating? So at any point, a para from grade one could end up in grade five?
No, we actually added a floating para last year, whose main responsibility is for that sub-separate setting, so that we can schedule those times for inclusion and push them. But we, but we need more, it's not the most effective system.
Right, because based on what you're saying, what I'm hearing is that whether or not the kids are able to go out to inclusion depends on how much time they have from the para.
It does, it does, it, it depends on their needs and their goals and where their present level of performance is. Then we make sure the staffing's provided, so that's really what drives it.
Okay, that just sounds a little bit different, and so that's why, is three enough?
Well, the three and then the floater would give us two, almost two in every single sub-separate setting.
Almost two.
Yes.
So, and I think this is an area, just that we're looking to increase more capacity across the district, so that we can facilitate inclusion more effectively, but also not have to take away from the classroom itself.
Yeah.
We want to maintain the levels of support within that room, because that's what those children deserve, but then also make sure we have the increased capacity to do this. And this year, that we really made this a priority across schools with the budget, and I think that was even looking at the same, along the same lines of adding another special education teacher over to Sylvia, they had some higher numbers that would make this more challenging. So I think this was really our opportunity to increase, our, really just the capacity at Sylvia, to make sure that we're able to do this more effectively across the board.
And that's, again, I want to reiterate, that's not a criticism, I'm asking, is three enough to make sure that that can happen effectively?
I think it's a great starting place to assess, to see where we can go from there. I think three, you know, gives them the four total...
Right.
Across the grade spans, so that we're gonna really have, you know, triple the capacity we had this year, and we need to assess year to year to see if that really is enough.
Okay. With that, no, I yield.
He was, okay, Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it, appreciate you coming. You know, I, I did last year talk about the chronic absenteeism rate as well, and I see here for priority one, increasing our student attendance rate from ninety point five to ninety-three percent. First, how are you gonna, how are you gonna go about doing that? And in the years prior, since you've been there, have you, have you taken on the attendance rate at the school, and if you have, how, what kind of improvements did you see from the prior years?
Sure, so, just in speaking of the current time that we're in, I can speak similarly to Ms. Cobb, that our, our numbers are affected by medical excuse absences, that definitely is playing a role. But heading into the school year, we broadened our attendance team to include an additional SAC, our behavior therapist, and then the entire leadership team, with one of the main goals being to build relationships with our families who were hovering around that, that chronic absentee level. We found that a big part of it is, is being proactive in our education of families. A lot of them are surprised when you say to them, you're hovering around that chronic absentee number, because it can sneak up on you quickly. So as, in, our main goal of fostering a sense of belonging, we found that, that has gone a long way, in terms of our chronic absenteeism. And then what was the second part of your question, I'm sorry?
Well, I, just to know, you know, what the, what the actual steps are to improve it, and in the past years that you've been there, I'm sure, because every, every school's got, it's not just Sylvia, except for, every school has that, most of the, it's chronic in, in every school, I'm assuming, because I've seen every, since the presentation, it's been, chronic absenteeism rate's been high. It's higher at some other schools than others, but what, what steps do you, are you taking for this time, and in the past, what have you done to, to increase the attendance, and has it worked in the past years?
So I will say, the, the big shift from previous years to this year is, is that more proactive approach at Sylvia's school anyways. Beyond what I, what I speak to that, in terms of that proactive approach, we do have a tiered approach that is similar to, to the other schools in Fall River as well, where tier one is really this, this classroom teacher is reaching out to that family, making connection with that family, informing them of attendance policy and numbers. If that tier one approach isn't successful, our tier two approach is our adjustment counselors get involved, and myself and one of the vice principals, and then at a tier three level, we're talking about an attendance officer getting involved. So we do operate under that, under that tiered approach, that tiered system. I have found success, we have found success, especially with the proactive approach and the educational approach, that's kind of existed at Sylvia, which is new this year versus previous years.
Okay, that, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Aguirre, then Ms. Larry?
So, the, when you look at, it says early childhood paraprofessionals, are those, is there a separate job description for that, or is a paraprofessional a paraprofessional?
We may ask that, ask Mr. Coogan, but it's, my understanding is, it's a paraprofessional.
Right.
All right, because I see this throughout the, the budget, a lot of paras, like, another school has a, they're converting a regular para to a K two para, and I'm not sure how that makes any sense of, I thought a para professional is a paraprofessional.
It is, it's, I think it's where they're targeting the support, so he's targeting, we, as, I think that, last week, we talked about how our goal is to have paras in every pre-K, K and one, so early childhood years. I think if someone has in their budget to have a para to service grades K to two span, that would be, but it's a paraprofessional, it's, it's really where the support is being targeted.
Yeah, because then you also get people can move within...
Exactly.[1783.41]
You know, just because it says one thing doesn't mean they can't move. So I think that's one of the issues. To go back to the additional language-based classroom that Ms. Rogers was talking about. So you wrote here something along providing equity across programming found within the Fall River public schools. When I read that, I read that as implying that it's not currently equitable. It says by adding additional paras to our language-based programming, comma, we would be providing equity across programming found within the Fall River public schools.
Correct, so the language-based strand is the only sub-separate strand that doesn't have two paraprofessionals within the classrooms?
Yep.
So you would therefore thinking that we are not providing equity across programming found within the Fall River public schools?
I'm, I don't know if I understand the question.
I'm assuming that you wrote this, so I'm just saying, and I kind of agree with you, but if by providing, by adding additional paras to our language-based programming, we would be providing equity across programing, programing, found within the Fall River public schools. And your answer was that all the other sub-separate classes have two, and they have one. Therefore, that's an equitable.
The other strands, so there are language-based strands classrooms in other school buildings besides Sylvia.
Yep, and they all have one or two?
One.
Correct, that's basically what, I agree with you. So Madam Superintendent, if this is based on what this gentleman just said, and based on the fact that if we have other schools that don't have two, why is it that we don't have two in all schools, all sub-separate rooms across the entire district?
Well, all sub-separate classrooms are not the same language-based classroom. The needs were different, and at the time, they only had one para assigned to them. What we're seeing is the needs have increased and which has, you know, which is why we're adding an additional paraprofessional. I mean, I don't, we can't just unilaterally say the need is the exact same in every single classroom. The social emotional classrooms dictated that we had two paras in every room. Our language-based have had one. With the increased need, kids are coming in with a lot more needs, and Mr. Loesch has requested that we added a second para to the room.
And I think also, as we noted earlier, this is our, our opportunity to really push inclusion for these students. You know, we want to be able to provide more opportunities for these kids for push-in. And as well as, as Ms. Ponce noted, this is based on need and looking at classroom structure across the district. And, you know, for us to put out one model for all students, we know that wouldn't be an individualized model. Looking at, you know, we have classrooms all over the district who some have three, three paraprofessionals looking at the need. Some have their typical classroom paraprofessionals plus one-to-ones as well. So really, we look at it as more needs-based instead of just a typical kind of across-the-board format.
So the room, the classrooms that Mr. Lenz is talking about at his school, how many other classes are similar to that across the district?
Across the district, from K to eight, we have, there's five over at Green, there's seven at Sylvia, and then there are another four at the middle school level that really is looking at student census-wise, excuse me, probably six at the middle school level. So right there, we have about eighteen. Durfee does their model a little bit differently in looking at just a really more of a sub-separate classroom to meet kids' needs across core content areas and providing them that small group instruction. So, you know, as a whole, we could say we have anywhere as, maybe as high as like twenty-eight.
Yep, so how many, out of those twenty-eight rooms, how many have one para?
Previously to.
How many have more than one para? That's a question.
Right now, both Green and Sylvia, they have floaters to help cover with inclusion and absences, but as of right now, that would be all.
I, I just, sorry.
As of right now, that would be all. Just Sylvia and Green have one floater each.
One. Which is the nature of the question. So if the premise is that in a situation as Mr. Lenz described, based on Ms. Rogers questioning, that if we want to improve inclusion opportunities for those children, we need almost a one, almost two paras in every one. One floater, the students shouldn't be in inclusion only when a floater's available or when he can pull magic to figure out how to get another person in. That's not a district-wide thing that we should be doing. So my question is, are all the other schools asking for additional paras that are going to make their language-based classrooms also have at least a minimum of two?
We, we've went back and looked at most, and we've added quite a few across the district. I would have to double-check each school's individual budget sheet to see where exactly we've had it all, but we've added quite a bit of para capacity across the board throughout all programs. As we know that, you know, one of the other pieces that they noted was absence coverage is a, becomes a huge deal within a lot of these classrooms, and that was one of the priorities as well.
So I just, I'm having a hard time with the, with the answer. So if the premise is that we're going to give Sylvia's school almost one-to-one or two paras in each of their rooms except for one, so they're going to be like ninety percent, eighty percent?
Except for three. They'll have four floaters who can help cover absences, the inclusion piece, but they'll have four out of the seven.
So out of the seven classes, he's going to have two in four of the rooms? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I've, and looking at their schedule and as needed. Yes, four out of the seven.
Right, so all right, the other school's going to have that same equivalent?
We've added additional floaters over at Green, looking at three out of the five. Looking at the, the middle school level, you know, as we would hope our students are maturing and really, you know, needing less support as time goes on, that's the way the model should be. But I have to go back and actually look at their, their budget lines to see how many floaters, if we add them to there.
Yeah, I think this is a valuable discussion, but I also think it's a district discussion. That if we're going to say that we're going to have at least whatever four out of seven is more than fifty percent, we should have that in all those type of classrooms. It shouldn't be a principal has to feel like, I got to ask for this, and then the other principal that might not know that this principal asked for that, then is going to get it. We had the same exact thing happen with the ELL paras in a foundational room, if I believe, last year. Where it was said that at certain schools, they count them, at certain schools, they don't. Right from the floor, this school committee said, we have the money, we're going to mandate one additional para for each of those rooms, across the board. So anybody's coming to us now with a foundational room, and I might be off on the wording, but they're going to automatically get a para, because that's the district policy, is that's what we do. I just think that we're, by doing it this way, it's like this school might, he might ask for it, somebody else might not, but they, those kids still deserve to get fully included, just like everybody else, and he should. They're entitled to it, yeah, exactly. So we, I just don't see why we don't do this, some of these things as a, as an upper-level administrative function, rather than have it be, this gentleman has to come before us and get questioned. I'm not questioning you. I agree with what you said, sir. But this is the type of thing of why we need to tweak this process, so that we know exactly what we have before us. I just don't, I just don't like the way that that particular piece goes. I do support this, but I also support it across the whole district. And I'm going to have to remember that in each of the other ones, but I'd like to get a report or something from the superintendent saying, what are we doing across all these type of classrooms? Because this same issue is going to happen with a different thing. And to take it one step further to the middle school, we talk about inclusion in the middle school. Do we still have the program where the kids only get inclusion in math and, and English, under the current situation?
I know, we've added capacity up there. There's an additional middle, teacher to cover history and English throughout.
I, there's something wrong with this thing. I can't hear what you're saying.
No, we, we have, we're able to prioritize support within history and science for our students at the middle school level in looking to really meet those needs as well, because we have students who do have services across all four core contents.
Okay, so a typical inclusion student, we've had this discussion in the past, has inclusion on their IEP, they get services by a special education teacher in English and math. Has that changed? Is that what you said?
No, they get services in English and math, because when we look at the core content areas, typically, the skills they're using in English are the same as history and science.
I would respect, respectfully disagree with that. A child that needs inclusion, in my opinion, if we're going to do inclusion right, that has the need and they get a special education teacher in math and English, they need it. Their disabilities don't go away in history and science. So when we look at district initiatives, as we're talking about here, this is what we should be spending extra money on. Adding teachers so that this happens across all grade levels. Similar to this gentleman for trying to get kids into inclusion, we need to do it as a district. We need to increase our inclusion, inclusion teachers across the entire district, including Durfee High School, because that same issue is going to happen all across the board. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Ms. Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Lenz. Just a question, I'm going to kind of switch the focus to curriculum a second. But you said on priority three, reestablishing a focus on STEM. Could you just elaborate on that a little bit, what you do now, what you want to reestablish moving forward?
Sure, so we had the opportunity to have teachers come together this summer as a, as like a STEM community, committee, excuse me. They looked at our current STEM programming and resources and the current units of study that were already in place. And in some instances, they redesigned the units of study, in other instances, they just elevated them. We then have been rolling out those units of study over the course of the school year and taking grade-level meeting time to introduce those units of study to the entire grade level. Talk about how the lessons will roll out, talk about the resources that we have in place, and also talk about the assessment system aligned with them. We do have a STEM coach this year, and she's played a vital role in the rollout of these units of study as well. And she's also supported teachers with not only her expertise in the content, but also supporting them with doing hands-on labs, both in our STEM lab and in the classrooms as well.
Is it part of Project Lead the Way at all?
Project Lead the Way is a part of it, yes, yes.
Okay, I just recently learned the effectiveness of Project Lead the Way. It just kind of caught my eye when you said reestablishing, so I was a little, thank you, appreciate it.
I would, I would exchange reestablishing with like bringing more excitement around the, the study of STEM.
Right, is it every age? Is it every grade, I should say?
Every grade, yes.
Thank you, I yield.
You're welcome.
Ms. Rogers?
Mr. Loesch, I just want to clarify something, because I don't, I'm having a hard time hearing you, so I just want to make sure I understood correctly. Did you say that the same special ed teacher, that, that the same special ed inclusion teacher for ELA is doing social studies, and the same one for math is doing science?
No, I was saying the skills across the core content areas, in order to access those, those areas are typically the same per a student's IEP. So we wouldn't necessarily, like, if you looked at a student's IEP, you wouldn't necessarily see goals typically in the areas of history and science, just because we know those are skills that, that span across core content areas.
Okay, okay, I yield.
Mr. Agia?
Madam Superintendent, I just had a question based on the absence rate. And you can get me this answer, or us this answer. Are all schools following the same attendance protocol with fidelity, a hundred percent?
They're supposed to. I mean, do you want me to say that every, I, I would expect that.
No, you don't even need to answer it today. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
So you want me to?
So I've asked, and we've talked about this before in public meetings. So if there's protocols in place, we have a policy that certain things are supposed to happen if a student's out, and what happens? It means a phone call, it means this, it means that, there's a specific thing. My question is, is it being done with fidelity across all schools, all attendance officers, and a hundred percent fidelity? That's what I, that's what the question is. I'm not looking for you to answer it now, not trying to put you on the spot. The second question I have is, I need to know the number of CRAs that have been filed across the entire district sorted by both school and by attendance officer. Not looking for that information now.
Yep.
Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Okay, thank you. First three for the panel. Next up, we have Tanzi Green Laterno. Mr. Adet from Tanzi.
Hi, yeah, good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Adet, the principal at James Tanzi Elementary School. And just to give you a little background on, on Tanzi, we are one of the smaller elementary schools in Fall River. So we're a two-unit school, K to five, so two classrooms at each grade level. We do have special ed and English learners included in all classrooms. Our high-needs population of students, many of our students fall into this category at sixty-seven point six percent. Our mission and vision, we're all about joyful learning, creating a culture of positivity for our students. And our students love school. That's what being a Tanzi Tiger is all about. Coming to school, learning, and having a joyful learning experience throughout the day. In terms of our big priorities, we, we try, I sort of bucketed things in, in terms of building and strengthening our professional learning community as a staff, as Team Tanzi. In terms of trying to personalize learning for all students. That's a goal of ours, to really look at our students as individuals, and we're small enough that we can do that well. And strengthening community and family partnerships are sort of our, our three big bucket areas in terms of what we try to do. We, we do have a successful intervention program to support struggling students at Tanzi. But currently, our capacity is, is limited. We have one intervention teacher, and her responsibilities are run the gamut across K to five, all content areas. So we're looking to add an additional position of another interventionist, just to build our capacity with that model. So we currently have students who might need intervention in both English Language Arts, as well as in mathematics, and they can't always get it as, as quickly as I'd like them to get it. So in adding another interventionist, we'll, we'll just build our capacity in that area. So that is the, my big request. My other request would be adding a community facilitator position, just to help us with community outreach, our attendance initiatives, supporting social emotional learning, and just academic outreach to families, getting families to come to school for different events, and meetings as needed. So those are my two requests. We are a small school, but that will definitely help us move forward. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Adet? Ms. Rogers?
I have all the questions. It's going to be the same question that I've asked everybody else. Is the one interventionist enough, and is the half-time community facilitator enough?
Yeah, I think the one interventionist, so, yeah, the interventionist doesn't work alone in isolation. We have an, we have an intervention team, which consists of an ISL. The ISL model has been really effective at Tanzi, so we want to keep that. We also have para-interventionists who are part of that intervention team, as well as our special educators. Our special educators service students during those intervention blocks as well. So it's, it's all hands on deck, we make it work, but another interventionist, I think, would meet our needs at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, the half-time community facilitator, I, we are a small school, so we do share positions with other places. We currently share an L teacher with Sylvia, we, we share elective teachers with Watson. So, yeah, working across multiple campuses is, is part of our culture, so we always make that work. So I think that would meet our needs at this time.
Okay, I just always go back to the question of, just because that's how we've done it, doesn't mean that that's necessarily how we have to continue.
Yeah, I appreciate that perspective. It is something that's worked in the past, so.
No, I'm just throwing it out there as something to consider, and I just want to ask the question to make sure that people are getting enough of what they need. You know your school best, you know your students best, so.
It is a new position, so I think we'll be trying it on, like, a lot, we have a very active PTO. We have volunteers who do a lot of this, this stuff. So being able to bring someone on board, I think will be a great opportunity.
Okay, I yield.
Anything for, Ms. Perera?
Thank you, Mr. Adet. Obviously, you've noticed clearly the huge increase in chronically absent children. So my first question would be, why do you think that is right now? Is this all COVID-related? Because I mean, you went from thirteen, which is probably, from what I've seen here, one of the best in the district, to a whopping forty-seven, which we could say forty-eight.
It hurts. It really does hurt. And yeah, I, I do attest a lot, a lot of it to COVID. We do a lot of proactive things at Tanzi to promote positive attendance. And like I said, kids, our kids love school, so our kids really do want to come. I do believe that. But we, we do a lot to like celebrate perfect attendance and doing like here and on time shout-outs for students. So we tried, we didn't do a lot of those things during COVID, just the nature of the time. But we've brought a lot of those traditions back, and it is having an impact, and we are getting our attendance back up there. We are typically around ninety-five percent every day.
Yeah.
So I am, I am confident that we're going to remedy it.
So the community facilitator position, the part-time that you're asking for, you currently don't have one, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. We don't have one.
See it there, okay. So who was doing the initial reach-out to parents with students who were, you know, let's say, how many, how many days do you go without hearing from a student before?
Yeah, no, we call students every day. We're small enough that we're able to do that. Um, so yeah, that's, uh, my team and I make those calls daily.
Okay.
And reach out to families to find out why. And that's, um, yeah, that's-
So currently, it's your, your, you yourself are making some of those phone calls?
My, Lee, Miss, yeah, our office manager, um, the vice principal, school adjustment counselors, um, the nurse helps us. It's all hands on deck.
And in general, how long is a student out before we go to the next level of service for that student? More than a phone call, let's say?
Oh, I, I, we, with a, a phone call, we, we make contact. So we always make sure that we, we know what's going on if a student's out even one day.
So you're saying every time you call, parents answer?
Well, not every, we don't always get an answer, um, but we try to make contact.
So if contact's-
After, after three days, that's a red flag for us, in which-
Okay.
We'd get like the attendance officer involved, and we'd do like a safety check.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Anything further? Um, Mr. Agia?
So you had mentioned a couple times that your school is small, which-
Yes, sir.
I can read, we know that the school is small. The, um, when you look at the interventionist slash coach, it gets one slash two, I'm assuming that means one interventionist and two coaches. When I look at it, if I'm looking at the equity across the whole school district-
Yes.
If we approve this budget that has a second interventionist, so that's two unit, two interventionists, do you have, how many units of each grade do you have at your school?
We're a two-unit school, so two units at each grade level.
So-
K to five.
Yep. So if, lot, if I'm just speaking logically now, if you have a two-unit school with two interventionists and two coaches, and a different school that has six hundred students, under that same theory, should have double, double the students, they should double. So they should have four interventionists and four coaches, if, you know, logic speaks. That's the part where I look at, it's difficult with a small school. And, um, as I mentioned before, we don't, we're not approving the, these line items. But the, this type of discussion, I think, is important to have, because if we had a, a school with a certain number, I could go to the school adjustment counselors the same. So two eighty-one, you says you have two. You have two adjustment counselors?
Yes.
You gonna have two next year?
That's our intent, yes.
They're staying, right? Nobody's cutting any?
No, no.
Yeah, so you're at one forty to one.
Correct.
That's a good caseload-
Yes.
-in my opinion. Um, that's probably where I think we should be across the district and stuff. So out of one, one forty to one school adjustment counselor, two coaches, two interventionists, for the resources that we have in a small school with lesser needs, Kevin's saying that, it's just my opinion, you don't have the same needs as another school in another part of the district. If I say, yes, this is what makes sense for your school, to keep it going well and doing the right by the children in the school and providing those services, I, the way I look at it is, I have to take that number and multiply it out when the schools get bigger. And the results need to, you know, be tougher when there's tougher kids. So I'm not trying to pit you against somebody else, I'm just trying to make the point that when we have a small school, we have to, there's other small schools that are gonna have the same type of questions, but it, it's, it's really hard to, for me to, to look at this and say, well, why aren't we doing, not to do less for Tanzi, but if we're use, doing X amount for Tanzi, we need to do the requisite amount or more for other schools that have greater needs, would be my thing. So I'm not looking to cut your position, but I think we, as an administration, need to justify why we're adding, we, we should be adding more, um, to that. The last point is, every single person that's coming up here keeps on saying that the chronically absentee rate is forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty. For the life of me, I can't figure out why we allowed this to go in to this budget document, because it's not truth in advertising, if that's the case. If there's facts and information that all of you have relative to it's COVID, it's this, it's that, it's excuse, then we should be reporting that. We shouldn't be putting out this stuff that's not accurate, in my opinion. What we're doing here is because that's the way we always do it. This is the way we always do the budget, so we do the same thing. Well, it's not truth in advertising right now, because every single person said the same exact thing. And I'm getting frustrated with it, because it's not necessarily accurate. You could be doing great work, like, we need the info to say, my real number's not forty-seven. I have X amount of kids that did this, I, like, just be truth in advertising. And you weren't asked that. I'm not criticizing the principals. But we, as an administration, shouldn't have been asking you to report these numbers. We, we did this already in the spring, and everybody on this committee kept saying, we gotta do this different, we have to be able to take the, uh, data from here and not there. Uh, you know, it doesn't make sense. But somebody asked a question about what, who's calling and what, with the, when the kids are out. Are you following, your school following the protocols that are in the-
Absolutely, yes. We do calls, um, we do do letters at different intervals, um-
The only reason why I'm asking is, it sounded like you knew what you were talking about, like you were, yep, we were on it. Can you just tell me, so, just refresh my memory of what that means?
All right.
So the protocol for this district is, what happens when the kid's out?
Yeah, no, we, we do have an attendance team that meets daily, um, and we, we look at the students who are out, we make calls daily. Um, we have letters, the district provides letters, um, that we can customize and use, um, and, and, and send out at different intervals as an intervention. Um, we have meetings, we call families in, um, and have meetings about attendance at, at different intervals. We also partner with the truancy officer, um, who's a great resource, um, and, and making home visits and, and things of the sort. Um, I, I know during COVID, it was just a big priority to make sure that we have our eyes on kids, like when the schools were closed, um, and that we, um, were able to make contact with students. Um, so working together as a team, we, we made those things a priority.
Let me ask you a, just a more targeted question. So the first step is, we gotta identify who's out-
Correct.
-on a given day. Do you have data and records every day of everybody that's out?
We do.
Somebody called, automated call went in?
Yes.
You have that system in place of, of somebody documented, not just get a team together?
Yes.
It's Kevin's responsibility to call these kids that go out, and then if that doesn't happen, this person, like, you have that system? And is that the district system that's helping to align how you handle that?
We do have the autom, the automated calls that go out, um, but we make additional calls, um, to, if we don't hear from, the protocol is that families let us know, if children are gonna be out, if we don't hear from families, uh, we make a point to call them, to find out.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see, like, if you knew exactly what the, I don't have the district policy in front of me, but I know it was very detailed, like, this, 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 this. So that's why I was asking. So with that, I yield. Thank you very much, sir.
Anything further? Uh, Ms. Larabee?
Yes, just quickly, uh, it's kind of for you, Madam Superintendent, is this situation, would, would the new student information systems be, uh, helping with this situation with the, the chronic absenteeism? Is, don't they have a, a better way to tackle this? Is it, wasn't that presented to us in some way?
I think that, um, the system will produce reports for us, but we have to have internal systems in place to account for our students who are absent. Um, uh, we do have some systems in place, and I'll get you that information. I just want to clarify, these numbers, whether they're COVID-related or not, they get reported. The, uh, the absentee rate gets reported, the chronic absentee rate gets calculated and reported. Certainly, what, we need to own our data, we need to look at it, and we need to disaggregate and pull it apart and say, yes, and we've had these conversations with principals, if the data, if, for instance, if it says they are at forty-seven percent chronic absenteeism, they should be able to look at that data and say, of those forty-seven percent within the school, in their teams as they're looking at it, oh, we know that these students are, were, that was COVID-related. We know that their, uh, average is going to improve, because this is the mid-year average, and our, um, uh, uh, attendance has gotten much better as the year has progressed. But we do need to have a handle on the number. We need to look at those numbers, good, bad, and ugly, and we need to set goals to reduce those numbers and make sure we put systems in place to reduce those numbers. Because at the end of the day, when we get to the end of the year, if we haven't used those numbers to make adjustments, then we're gonna have high chronic absenteeism numbers at, at the end of the year. So I, I totally understand that internally, we need to pull it apart, but those are, those are real numbers at the mid-year. Obviously, those numbers will shift. We're not gonna deny that COVID didn't have an impact, and I think that's statewide, that's not only us. But the fact of the matter is, so if our numbers are, are decreased, our attendance is increasing now, let's look at our numbers and let, how are we going to reduce those numbers more significantly from between now and the end of the year? So I, I don't-
So those projected, or is those real?
Those, those are real numbers that were, that were, that are-
Projected, or?
So they're real as of the mid-year?
Absolutely.
So I think it's like Principal Pop had referenced, it was, it was at that time. So like ninety days into the school year, those students, that's the percentage of students tracking toward chronic absenteeism. But then schools identify those students. So some students have been absent nine times. If they're not absent for the rest of the year, or they don't get to that magic, you know, eighteen, then they're not chronically absent. So we'll see, as the year goes on, we'll see that percentage of students dropping because students are falling off track from chronic absenteeism. But that was as, at half-year. Those were the students who met the criteria for being absent, ten percent or more, to date.
Yeah, so it's a projected, is all I'm saying. So in truth, and when I'm looking at this, or the public looks at it, they're not gonna see that as projected. It doesn't say projected chronically absent rate. It says chronically absent rate forty-seven percent.
Right. I think the language that says mid-year, if, 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 if the language projected, would have been more sense.
Correct. And all I'm looking for is, I'm sure you're doing it, but we just don't get it. Like, I, I can't tell you I didn't read it, it just doesn't come in. So we should be looking at it to say, any principal can tell me who had the ten days already. So they're already locked in, that they're gonna be targeted as chronically absent for the, for the year, no matter what happens. Right? If they've missed, or eighteen, whatever the number comes out to.
Right.
So there's students that are already at that number.
Yes.
That's all I'm suggesting, is that we don't have that perspective on, this is what it is. But we're getting a document that keeps saying, we got fifty percent chronically absent here, forty, it's not necessarily telling the whole picture. That's, this isn't supportive of the principals, this isn't to go against the principals. But at some point, we need to be, we as a school committee can't make decisions unless we get the real data with the real information. And that's, that's the only point I want to make. I yield.
Anything further?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just to clarify, you know, we've talked with everybody about what these numbers are, and yes, we need to have clarification about what that is. But I think we also have to pay attention to what that absentee rate looks like for the last school year, because we only had our kids in half of the time. So they were physically present only half of the time. So when we're thinking about absenteeism, that plays a role. We also know that our kindergarten numbers were a lot lower. And as the parent of a kindergarten kid, kindergartners are kind of a disaster when it comes to getting sick. Right? So all of those things play into what those numbers look like. So it's hard to compare what the, the year-end for the last school year was with the, what this school year looks like, because we're not comparing apples to apples. That just, it looks very different.
It will look very different anyway, because we, we had attendance virtually present, or, you know, kids that were in hybrid mood, or kids that were fully, um, in person. So that data from last year is gonna be very hard to have any sort of, um, good comparison to this year. But I agree, we use the year before, or, like, we have to go to the last year that we had an actual, um, typical year.
And even that is a challenge.
To do that, to, to, exactly. It changes all the time. I, I, I mean, I understand what Mr. Agia's trying to get at. I think that there are some students that we already know, already chronic, and that's what he's saying. So if a student's already reached that number, what is that percentage? But, you know, it's not, um, we don't know that that's the data, that you, we will get that data also, but we also, this is how we track our chronic absentees, and this is how we project where we're gonna be by year's end.
And I agree with Ms. Agia, just for that, that point, I agree with him. It's just, so that has to be clear, but we also can't compare the two, which is the other point that I'm making. So when people are looking at that, they're not saying, last school year, we only had an absentee rate of thirteen percent, and oh my gosh, what is happening now, because now we have forty-seven percent. But you can't compare, because you're not looking at the same-
Absolutely.
-same data points. They're very, very different. So with that, I yield.
Uh, Mr. Agia?
So along with that, Ms., Madam Superintendent, if we could get, so, a bunch of students in this, this school, once they get to that number. So we have the district protocols to be sure that they're being followed. Along with that, what happens to, Kevin Agia's out halfway through the year, and I'm already out eighteen days? What trigger, what services, what something gets triggered to say, this child needs further intervention documented without having them fall through the cracks, because everybody has hundreds of people? So I'm looking for an answer now, but I think that's very valid to say, what are we gonna do? It's one thing to just report the numbers and say it. It's a second thing to do, how are we gonna change it? How are we gonna make it better? Uh, we've done initiatives here. We've gone, bought cars to take to the house and have people picked up. We need data on that. Is it, like, what are we doing that is, for that child that's out for that many days? And how do you make that up at a certain point? You know, so I think we need systems in place to say, if this reaches, I asked you for the CRA numbers, not because I want to take everybody to court. The fact of the matter is, is that CRAs are meant to get services for children, services for families, get them into the court system if need be, get them into the counseling that's needed, a trigger. So this should happen. So we're gonna get the data, I'll predict, that we're gonna get the data. The data's gonna indicate that we got a whole slew of kids that have been out more than the days that we should have. And the other data that I asked for about the CRAs is gonna, you're gonna report to us, I'll predict that we haven't filed a requisite amount of CRAs to get these children in court. Just a prediction. I yield.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Audet. Um, Dr. Dunn from Green?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. It's my first year as the proud principal at Green Elementary School. Um, I am not new to Fall River. This is my seventeenth year in the district. I was an ELA teacher at Derby High School for many years. Um, and then I came to Cuss Middle School for one year as an ELA teacher. And then I went to Fonsoka, um, right as the turnaround efforts began, five years ago. So I have experience as the redesign coach, and I left Fonsoka as the vice principal. So I am about to advocate for our six hundred and eighty scholars at Green Elementary School. Um, our school is currently in year turn, uh, year three of a turnaround. We're currently designated in need of focused targeted support. Uh, for me, stepping into this role is about putting structures into place right now. Uh, I believe I'm the seventh principal, possibly, in the last ten years at Green Elementary School. Uh, so we need to move our school forward. So right now, we're really working on building our school community and our capacity of our staff to accelerate the learning for all of our students, um, in a safe, supportive learning environment. Particularly, our data shows that our English Language Learners and our special ed students' data is pretty static and is not moving. So we really just need to, um, put things into place of that accelerated progress that is really needed. And building the capacity of our staff will help move the data for those subgroups. So currently, we have an instructional model, which includes four units at each grade level from kindergarten through grade five. We have two pre-K classrooms. One is a full-day integrated classroom, and the other pre-K classroom is, um, split into two half-day programs. One is an integrated class, and the other is a substantially separate class. We have a strand of language-based classrooms, currently five, kindergarten through grade five, as well as a foundational strand for our, our multi-language learners, that's also currently at four classrooms. And so when I get into talking about the different positions that we need, I'm gonna talk specifically about those two populations of our kids. So first, um, we are going to convert, uh, we currently have a K-one foundational classroom. We're going to split that into two specific classrooms, a kindergarten foundational class and a first-grade foundational class. Right now, we're at, like, maximum, I believe we have twenty-eight students in that classroom. So we, um, in order to best meet the needs of the kids, we are proposing splitting that and having a kindergarten foundational class, as well as a first-grade foundational class. Um, likewise, we have a, we're up to a fourth grade foundational class right now in our strand, so we're going to add a fifth-grade foundational teacher in classroom as well. Um, in addition to that, our language-based classrooms, we currently have two fifth-grade language-based classrooms, but our student census would not indicate that we would need a second fifth-grade classroom next year, so we're gonna convert that position, and that position will move to Talbot Middle School as a special ed teacher, uh, instead of having a language-based classroom at Green. We also are advocating for three teacher leader positions. We currently have no teacher leaders at Green Elementary School, and because- and because of the data set, we are proposing that those teacher leaders are working with our substantially separate or our special ed teachers. So we'll have a special ed teacher leader, a multi-language learner, special, uh, teacher leader, and then also a math teacher leader. We also would like to expand our STEM program. So we're proposing that we add a STEM teacher for, that will service K to two students. So we are a project lead the way school, and in doing that, we'd like to, um, we'd like to have a STEM teacher that services the two sets of students. I believe that before I came to Green, the STEM teacher that we, the STEM, the STEM position that we currently had only serviced students in grades three to five. And so the students in the lower grades did not have STEM. This year, we changed that so that all students have STEM. But we, we really need to have two separate teachers. I'd like to build the capacity of those two teachers also and add a, um, a strand of professional learning community to support all of our teachers in rolling out the project lead the way curriculum. And one more position that, um, we, a teaching position, we'd like to have a student support specialist teacher. And that teacher would really be supporting the SEL needs of our building. We currently have three school adjustment counselors, but we have built a student support center. That was one of the initiatives that I brought to, uh, Green when I arrived last July. And we really would like this, this teacher, we envision that this teacher is going to support the, um, the social skills of our students. So they would also be doing social skills groups and lunch bunches and helping with the implementation of different curriculums such as the zones of regulation. Because we're adding the two, uh, the two foundational classrooms, we would also be adding two foundational para-professional positions to support those classrooms. So we would be looking to have a grade-one foundational para-professional as well as a grade-five foundational, um, para-professional. And much like my colleagues, we are also going to advocate for adding, uh, three para-professionals at the grade-one level so that they would be able to better support the academics in those, um, primary grades. And also adding one special ed language-floating para-professional position to help with those language-based classrooms. And much like we have heard from all of the principals, we are proposing adding a community facilitator. So at Green, we have a, a very large population. I think it's thirty-eight percent of, of first language learners. We actually have more Portuguese-speaking students than, um, Spanish-speaking students by very, a very small margin, but regardless, more Portuguese-speaking. And we really envision that this community facilitator would help with our attendance initiatives and family engagement as well as helping, um, families obtain community resources that they need. So I'm really looking forward if, if it is approved to having this, this person come on board to help with these initiatives. And I believe that concludes the positions that I'm looking for. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Um, Ms. Pereira?
Hi. So I have a, a question regarding the community facilitator. I'm glad you have it because I see you were one of the schools that did it previously, right?
Yes. I don't think, I don't think most of us have a community facilitator.
Yeah, most of you, and I'm, it's looking to me that most of you are getting that position. Going back to attendance, I, I definitely want everybody to, all the principals to understand, I'm not bringing up the increase to try to, you know, point fingers or what have you. Clearly comparing this year, um, with the last two years of craziness, um, doesn't always make sense. But I went back and looked at the budget, um, from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, looking at differences in attendance. And let's face it, we can never really, COVID or not, we can never really compare one year to the previous year because you're dealing with different families. Right? You have a group of students leaving, a new group of students coming in, which presents you with new families who may have their own individual barriers to getting their children to school, whether it be medical, behavioral, transportation, you know, what have you. So I want you to know, the only reason I'm making that comparison is first of all, the numbers are in front of me. And second of all, to look at it and say, what we're doing, is it the best we can do? Is it working? You know? And I think the fact that I'm seeing most of you, um, get these community facilitators in is great because I think that's going to help engage families and figure out what those barriers are. Because we can, you know, fill our schools with the best educators in the world, but if we don't have, you know, all of our students sitting in a chair. So my question is, you said your facilitator is, is Portuguese-speaking or you're looking for someone Portuguese-speaking?
I mean, in a perfect world, that would be fantastic. I, I don't know that we can necessarily market ourselves that way. We, we need, we need to have a community facilitator. We do have some, we do have some, um, staff members that are Portuguese-speaking and Spanish-speaking, which is fantastic, and they do help. We do use Lion Bridge, um, the translation service all the time. I think it's a fantastic, uh, it's a fantastic resource for all of us. But I mean, in a perfect world, yes, it would be fantastic if our community facilitator could speak another language. Yes, absolutely.
You actually answered my question by talking about Lion Bridge. Okay. Because I was thinking to myself, is there a way if there's a, you know, a community facilitator at, you know, Tansy School who speaks Spanish, but the one, you know, a Green School speaks Portuguese? Is there a way to allow, you know, for maybe help with, um, communicating with parents? But you answered that question with the language, um, line service.
It's, it's a great service. It really is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre?
The, uh, Madam Superintendent, can we get some, I think the community facilitator position has been at some schools. Can we get any data around how that's been successful and what it, what it was, what it wasn't? The other thing is that, uh, I'm not sure what the job description reads for, um, for the hours for such a position. But I think we have an issue in this district that we only think the problems exist during the school day, and we don't have wraparound services at night and when other things are going on. So we need to find some, whether it's these positions or other positions, to, to service after hours is my thing. But I think we, since we're going with it, I would assume that you have the data that indicates these are very well received. But I've never seen that yet. The question on, uh, this, for the five units of the language base that we talked about, so are you going to be full? One per each grade? Are you going to be?
So I think it really depends. So, um, right currently, we have a, a K-one language-based classroom. We have a two-three language-based classroom. We have a grade-four language-based classroom, and we have two fifth-grade language-based classrooms. So I think it really depends on the student, um, census, basically, as to how those numbers might, um, change the makeup of the classrooms. For example, if we have, um, a large population of grade two, that we might have just a standalone grade-two language-based classroom next year. I, I don't know what that's going to look like, um, as we move forward. It might be a, a first-grade and a second-grade language-based classroom, but I'm sure Michael can speak to that.
So in short, looking at the projections for next year, we've made sure that there's room for growth at each grade level. Green had a major, uh, bubble at grade five. So that's why we were able to really move that classroom on to another school. But we do have room for growth at each grade level, uh, for start of next year.
I was asking about the paras.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So like the addition of the para to the?
So I, we have a, a para float, one para float position. So this is, um, an additional para float position so that they can help along with, um, in the language-based classroom, yes. So, yes.
So you'll have five rooms with seven paras?
Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes. We have, we have five, well, no, we're going to have four rooms. Sorry, I'm sorry. We're going to have four rooms next year.
Four rooms with seven paras?
Four with six, looking at the budget. Four with six.
Right. You, you see with, uh, you know, if we need more, we need more, like, so she's got four rooms with six paras. The other guy had seven rooms with whatever that was. It wasn't the same percentage, basically. So it sounds to me like you're going to need, if we're, if we're doing what everybody's saying is the rationale, you need more paras for those rooms, which I'm sure you'll take whatever extras we give you. But I, I just think that's, uh, one of the issues that we definitely have to keep looking at.
So in comparison, looking at both schools, it's one flow para per every two, two classrooms, which is consistent among both. There's four over at Sylvia for seven classrooms and two over at Green for four classrooms.
Right. And hopefully, they don't need to go into inclusion at the same time.
Why?
If you don't have all, if you don't have all the rooms covered, right? Hope, let's hope that they don't need that inclusion su- support.
Yep. And in, with collaborating with the principals, that's what we looked at, was the level of requested need.
Yeah. No, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. You can only go by what they request. I think it's valid to, to push you on that because, and quite frankly, if they, the need's going to exist, it's not, if we only got half the rooms covered and all of the children need to have a service. I know you can do scheduling and, and the like, but let's call it like it is. Where, let's hope that they don't all need that service at the same time because they can't provide it with only half the people. That's my only point. And I, if we would give you more, we have plenty of money. We have needs. So when I'm saying this, it's with the knowledge that we, we have the money to do some of these initiatives. That's all. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, Mr. Loesch. I just want to make the point as we're trying to figure out these classes, we're seeing these documents. We've got to get to like, okay, what is it? That's all. The grade-one positions that you, it looks like you have three. So I assume you have two grade-one paras?
I have, I have one. So I have four first-grade classrooms. I have a K-one foundational classroom that has a para-professional. I have a K-one language-based, um, classroom that has a para-professional. So I have three first-grade class, I have four first, regular first-grade classrooms, and I have one para-professional that floats around all four classrooms currently.
Right. So you don't have five units of one?
I have four units.
And then you have five units of two?
I have four units of two. I have a, I have a foundational classroom at grade two, and I have a two-three language-based classroom.
I, I was just basing it on the, when you had said that, that you're a five-unit school, that's, in my mind, that's what I was, I was reading it as five of these, five of these, five of these. That's?
It's, it's, it's four regular classrooms and then those outliers. The foundational classroom is one strand and the language-based classroom is the other strand.
And they all have the same support. They all have extra paras in each of those.
The L-classroom and the foundational classroom, yes.
When we look at the other schools that they were going to have one, which I think is a district initiative, to provide each grade-one classroom with a full-time para?
Yes.
You, you meet that, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And all schools meet that?
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're proposing.
To meet that. So everyone's going to be equal. Each grade-one class will have the, uh, you know, I think that's, that's totally fine. The, um, the numbers on the counselor and, you know, you have a high, high-needs school, and when I look at the student support specialist teacher position, some of the, not some, I mean, most of the duties that are in there are related to mental health type of support. So, um, if I had, my opinion would be to make that an extra school adjustment counselor that has those skills to lower your caseload, but provide the services such as social skills groups, uh, lunch bunches, zones of regulation, support, those type of things. As I'm reading that, I'm saying to myself, why is this particular thing called a teacher? Because, and sometimes teachers have those skills. I'm not suggesting otherwise. But all of those, the details of the position will support SEL needs is to me pointing to a professional in the counseling field. It's just my opinion. I think you need it, you need a position, but I'm not sure why, uh, it would have to be a teacher versus an extra counselor.
So our school adjustment counselor, well, this teacher would not be, um, supporting grid C services for, um, our IEP students, but our school adjustment counselors do. I don't think that we have the need, uh, I think that Mrs. Cobb was saying that she had like forty students on grid C. I think we have about thirty perhaps, spread among three school adjustment counselors currently. Of course, we don't know what next year will look like, but that's, I think that was the rationale for having a teacher versus an actual school adjustment counselor because they're not providing those grid C services. But they're helping with the SEL needs of the building.
Yeah. I guess, um, my belief is that school adjustment counselors' jobs, job descriptions is not just to service the C grid services on an IEP. I guess that's just a difference of opinion of what I think a school adjustment counselor should be doing versus what they may be only doing on the C grid services. I find the skillset of a, a mental health counselor should be doing all of the things that you have listed here, and we need to provide the opportunities for them to do those things. But everything that you're saying, other than the piece of the, the C grid services shouldn't have any bearing, in my opinion, on what these kids need. And if that, you lower the caseloads lower, then if, if I'm a counselor and I had only twenty students that have C grid services, doesn't mean my job ends. I just, you know, obviously you know that. But the C grid services shouldn't come into the equation when we're looking at SEL needs for the school. There is SEL needs. They should be done by a mental health professional whenever possible. I don't see the need for it to be a teacher. Sometimes in situations like this, there's an identified person. Like I know I have, you know, Johnny Jones, that is a very good teacher that can do some of these things. He can do like, almost like an ISS type of position. As I'm reading, just reading through this, that's kind of what I, maybe happened. I don't know. I don't, I'm not privy to that information. But everything that you wrote here is basically a school adjustment counselor in my mind. But thank you for the presentation. With that, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre, if I can just clarify, we have some student support specialists in the district, and I think that the intent was to have, um, they're, they're, they would function more like a therapeutic mentor type of thing, where they would push into classrooms or do small groups, offer support, not to the level of a school adjustment counselor, but do that in-between level of support in classrooms. Yeah, I would say if that's the case, she probably will need more than one. But, um, that's what the intent of the student support specialist, uh, position was for, to do some of that, um, mid-level work.
And do we have those in other schools, in the elementary schools?
We, well, in elementary, no, we do not. And, and, um, Principal Dunn is requesting that. But we currently have some, uh, successful models of student support specialists at the high school.
Yeah. Uh, maybe, um, may I request some data on that? Because I think I would like to see whether that's the case or not. I do think it's a valid position if it's utilized properly. But what you're explaining is things also that could be done by somebody that's not going to require as much, uh, of a salary. A therapeutic mentor-type person. I think we need those in the district. They don't go for seventy-some grand or whatever's in here. So when we're looking at a finite amount of money going forward, some of those positions should be done by folks like that. So we get two, we get three, we get more bang for our buck rather than less. So I'm not saying I'm, I'm opposed to this. The other reason why I think we should, all the principals should watch these meetings, they should listen. I'm assuming that you all talk about what your positions are. If the, the Green School needs a student support specialist to do the following things, and they're listed, and we as a school feel like that's an important piece, then every school should have one. If it's something that we, we, we want to do and have an initiative. Or we say everyone should need a therapeutic mentor, whatever it is. But the point I'm making is, these are the things that everybody should get. If they don't happen to talk, in the past, I've asked if people see this chart, and it was like hidden, uh, you know, if one school asks for something, the other school should know, yeah, that makes sense. Green School is asking for that. Makes all sense in the world. I want one of those too. Or like, you know, that's where I think some of the, the problem has to come in. But I support the need of this. I would just like to weigh in on like, especially even with our district counselors and the like, to say, what is the position that we're looking for? And if we can't find people, what do we do? So I, I do think it's valid, but I did have a note here. Do we have these in all schools, eight, grade eight and under? Because I thought it was a high school position. And what do they do at the high school? So there's a job description. Um, I'd like to see the job description. What you're describing here isn't going to fit in that job description probably. It's probably going to have to be tweaked towards an elementary position. Uh, like I said before, this sounds like a, a temporary placement, an ISS type of position. Try to get the kids to, you know, if they're dysregulated, to get them regulated back in the class. That's what this sounds like. I just think we, we, if we're going to do it, let's do it across all schools. If it's that good of an idea, let's do it in all schools. With that, I yield.
Anything further?
I have a question about that. So I'm going to go kind of wild and go rogue here. So I would argue that it, it's probably going to be a whole lot easier to fill a position like that than it is to fill a SAC position. Because right now, we already talked about that. There's a shortage of SACS across, there's a shortage of mental health counselors, period, across the state. So if we're looking at those positions, the word teacher is throwing me off, um, but that could just be me because I'm looking at that almost as like, um, in the in-home therapy world, there's a mental health clinician, and then there's a bachelor's level person that helps support what the mental health clinician is doing. And it sounds to me that's what you're asking for. So am I, am I off?
Yeah. I, I mean, that's, that is what we're asking for. That is what we're asking for, yes.
The current job description for the student support specialist requires them to have a teaching license, that's why.
Okay. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they have the mental health or the social-emotional experience to be able to do that piece.
They're not providing therapy. They're working with small group. They're pushing into classrooms to support class and students. They're not... Their role is not to provide therapy.
Right, no. I'm not thinking of a therapist. So a therapist would have to be a master's level position, right? That's a totally different ballgame. But I'm thinking of this more along the lines of like a bachelor's or social work person or somebody with a bachelor's in psychology that has that. When you're thinking therapeutic mentor, I'm thinking like one step above that. That kind of takes on that role of being able to, not necessarily like ISS issues, but we're talking a proactive approach.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're not talking ISS.
Right, and so I'm thinking more of, this is the person that's going to go in and facilitate your lunch bunches that acts almost as the second chair to your SAC.
That's right. And so my vision for this position is that they are in service, you know, with the SACs. So they're working as a team.
Yep. So when I look at that, my big wild idea goes along with what Mr. Aguirre said. That makes sense for all of the schools to have them. Because if we're talking about... And I know we're not making that decision today. But if we're talking about how there's such a need for support for our kids and we have such a hard time filling SAC positions, then maybe that's the route that we need to go. Except that role just has to be very clearly defined for the elementary and middle school levels. Because it's going to look different than it does at the high school level.
And I think Ms. Costa has... This is something she's passionate about, that she's had many conversations with me about, is having that in-between level of service and care for students.
I'm right there with you. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sipson, Mr. Aguirre.
So based on the conversation, I think it's worth exploring the look of a position called student support specialist and not calling it a teacher. Because I think you could create something here that is very valid across all of the schools. So I think you use this because that's currently kind of what it is that we use, and I understand that. But if we're looking at it to be more specific to what Ms. Costa has obviously recommended to... And I haven't spoken to Ms. Costa about this, but based on what the superintendent just said, this is a position that our lead SAC would really like to have. I think her and her team should be looking at it and say, what would a job description for a student support specialist look like? What's the salary range where we could get the person? And not have to pigeonhole ourselves to be a teacher. So I think that's something that we definitely could look at going forward. When I talked about the ISS position, there is a need in our district for students that act up. And sometimes we need them to go to a place rather than suspend them out of school. So whether we put our heads in the sand and say that we don't need an ISS across the district, I would ask people to be realistic. We have students that get dysregulated, make poor choices, and they need a consequence. I think that's part of the problem is that we don't have that going on across all of the schools. So when you say social skills groups, lunch bunches, zones of regulation support and the like, I read that as students making a poor choice, he acted up, he acted out, he did something else. They need to go to a place where they can get regulated or face a consequence and then get regulated. There is a place for that across the district. So when we're looking at positions like this, running a school, you need a place for a student that is acted up, made a poor choice, so that they can be removed from the classroom, whether it's temporarily or not. But we need to start addressing these behaviors in solid ways, documented. So when I mentioned ISS, I'm not necessarily only talking about this position. There is a need for such a type of position to be able to issue some consequences. Because from what I hear, in a lot of places, we're not issuing the proper consequence. So that's food for a whole nother discussion. But I would implore the superintendent to work with Ms. Costa and come up with something that meets the student support type of position across the district. With that, I yield.
Okay. Next, Laterno. Mr. Sipson, thanks for joining us.
Good evening. My name is Sean Sipson and I am honored to be the principal of the Alfred S. Laterno Elementary School. On behalf of my staff, school site council and parent-teacher organization, I would like to thank the central office team for supporting our school in this year's budget process. I would like to thank my school leadership team, the instructional leadership team and my formal and informal principal mentors. Your support is appreciated. I would like to thank the school committee for all of your support and want to welcome new members. And of course, I want to thank the Laterno student and parent community. Together, we can and we will. This is my second year as principal of Laterno. Prior to this, I spent the majority of my career in Chelsea, Massachusetts as an ELL or MLL teacher, an MLL director and then principal. I have two young children and an amazing wife who would love attending the Laterno athletic events. Our enrollment as of today is six hundred and thirty-four students. We are a four-cohort school from grades K through five. We are proud to house the foundational English learner program for grades K through five. We currently have two hundred and forty-two MLL students, which is roughly thirty-eight percent of our population. This year, we were proud to welcome a third pre-K classroom and two new step-up classrooms for grades two through five. With these new classes, we have welcomed three new teachers, six new paraprofessionals and a BCBA, board-certified behavior analyst. This year, for context, we shifted from an academic dean and added an ELA in math department head to support content instruction. We are also in the process of hiring a third school adjustment counselor to strengthen our social-emotional support and family partnerships. Laterno currently has extended learning time, which provides an additional one hour per day that is funded by a Twenty-First Century grant in Fall River Public Schools. Laterno is enrolled in the MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Inclusive Practice Academy. We are excited to leverage this academy to improve our capacity to universally design instruction and improve our tiered systems of support for social-emotional learning, behavior and academics. I wanted to share with the committee and my colleagues in the city of Fall River the joy I felt this morning during arrival to see our students' smiles as they came in the building. It was a huge lift today. Just wanted to note that. It was an emotional experience. I was not prepared for it, but felt very grateful to experience. This budget year, we are requesting paraprofessional supports for grade one, pre-K and for our step-up program. As my colleagues have already stated, paraprofessionals are an essential part of our schools, including Laterno. Our paras support students one-to-one and small groups, also in tier one or whole group instruction. The paras not only support instruction, they support reinforced behavior and social-emotional learning. So I'd like to connect adding paras to the support of mental health and social-emotional learning. With these three... Sorry, we're requesting three first-grade paras so that we'd have one per each classroom. We have a four-cohort school. We currently have one paraprofessional. We're requesting one para for our step-up program that would float between our two classrooms. This would allow us to have flexible supports, as previous colleagues had stated, for their own sub-separate programs. And then one pre-K paraprofessional, so that each of our... Each pre-K classroom would have two. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions about these position requests.
Anything for Laterno? Okay. Mr. Aguirre?
Thank you for the presentation. The... When I look at the first-grade paras, so you had a four-unit school and you said these will support students in the one-to-one support. Do you not have any current? Is that... Or you have one?
So with our four cohorts, one is a foundational classroom and we have a foundational para in that room. So we're hoping to add three more so that each of our first-grade classrooms would have a paraprofessional.
Okay, so is that the same as all the other ones? So in all the other schools, that if they had in one of their units be a foundational class, do they not get a extra one?
The foundational classrooms have a para.
Right, so in other schools that have a foundational classroom as part of their unit, so a four-unit school, he's saying one is a foundational class, so one of his four units. If another school has five units, one of which is a foundational class, are they still only having one?
Every first-grade classroom will have a full-time para. That's our goal. Regardless of whether... I mean, the foundational. If he already has one foundational class with a para in there and he's a four-unit school, then that means he needs three others for his other.
Yeah, yeah. So the reason why I'm asking that is there's a rationale for why we put... Why we suggested, rightfully so, educationally, that a foundation room needs a para in it. Separate from that, we are now making a determination that all first-grade classrooms deserve a para.
Right.
What I'm suggesting is, when you have one of your four be a foundational, he needs an extra para. Because that classroom of fifteen, how many kids in the foundational grade one?
Twenty-seven.
What?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And can you explain what a foundational classroom means?
Yeah, this is a classroom that's designed for new arrivals. So students that have English language proficiency of one or two in the WIDA scale or low threes. So students that are multilingual learners that are learning English as a secondary language.
Is it safe to say they're very needy and they have a lot of needs? So the reason why I'm asking that is, so you have one grade with twenty-seven of those children. The foundational classroom has one para. In your other classrooms, I bet you don't have twenty-seven or... What are the other three grades, grade ones?
They are not as high as twenty-seven.
Right, so we have a foundational room with twenty-seven and one para. We have a regular class or three regular classes with, let's say, twenty-two, twenty-three. They're going to be twenty-two to one, but you've got a teacher in a foundational room with twenty-seven to one with tremendous amount of needs in comparison to the other ones. That's the reason why I'm asking the question. And I believe that if we're going to say all grade ones need it, then you need two in the foundational room or whatever other principals have the same. Because there's no comparison to the needs in those two classrooms, what you just suggested, in my opinion. You did mention a BCBA or a cluster coordinator?
Yeah, a BCBA.
Yeah, so Adam Superintendent, on the mat, the front sheets of each of the... That's not listed here. So unless it's listed as like a department head or something else, but I do think it's important for those positions. But if we list them, at least we know that's another administrative support. At least it's supposed to be an administrative support for the needy strands in your building. So not sure where that fits in. Do you have three department heads?
One of them is the BCBA, so we have two department heads and then one BCBA.
Just not listed as such.
It wasn't separated out. It wasn't separated out.
Yeah, yeah, so like when you said BCBA, I'm not seeing it here. I always thought those positions were meant to be created in the likeness of a vice principal. So they didn't have to be a BCBA per se. They could have been a vice principal. They would have, I guess, been... They must have the credential to do the evaluations, I would assume, because that was part of the requirement, I'm assuming.
This particular BCBA does not evaluate.
I thought that was part of the job description.
For our autism programs, we have strategically put BCBAs tied to them due to the service needs per student's service delivery grid in their IEPs. As part of the preparation for a BCBA, they don't typically go through the evaluation process. We actually have the majority of them going through it now to learn the process so they can effectively evaluate at a minimum all the paras that support these programs. But the majority of them don't have teaching backgrounds, so that's not a connected piece to it. The cluster coordinator position does have the evaluative piece for programs.
So this is not a cluster coordinator then?
No, it's not, a BCBA.
Two separate positions.
Right, no, I just asked if it was. That's why I'm trying to figure out what the position is. This is not a...
No, it's a BCBA.
This is like an autism special... What used to be the autism specialist that got converted?
Correct.
Is that what I'm saying? So the... Just truth and whatever we can do to clarify. I do think the point of the needs of the children in those foundation classrooms is tremendous. So I think that's something that's food for thought and if we are going to add some things, I think that we need to do it. And you had a para step-up, one would float between our step-up rooms?
That is correct.
So how many are in there now? How many rooms and how many?
We have two rooms, each have two paras within them. So the ask is for another para that could float between the rooms.
Only two classrooms?
Correct.
So you have two in each plus one floater between the two, so you have five to rotate. And how many children are in there, roughly?
Twelve in each classroom.
Twelve in each?
Yeah.
All right, thank you for your presentation. I yield.
If I could just bring something up. Laterno and Morton are both ELT schools. If you recall, for those members who were on the committee a few years ago, we eliminated ELT at the three schools that had ninety-minute... Ninety more minutes of instruction daily. And the committee at that time opted to wait for Laterno and it was a different grant for Laterno and Morton's grant to expire so that they wouldn't cut it midstream. That is going to go before the committee next week because we're going to have to make some decisions. I think the intention of the committee was that we were going to build equity into all schools by providing extra time. We've negotiated an additional fifteen minutes of time for every single school and the intention was that the Laterno and Morton, that would be eliminated also. I don't know. The committee will have to vote on whether to have them reapply or whether to let... To also to eliminate now that their grants are at the end.
That'll come up the next meeting. Mr. Aguirre?
Just on that issue, based on what you had mentioned, I do recall that when the grant runs out, the grant runs out and we were going to do it across the district. So I would say that if that was the case, unless you're proposing otherwise, I wouldn't even know why we'd need to bring it up. You know, just speaking as one member, like we made that decision. It was a tough decision to get rid of it across the district. But in the... You said it quite well. It was for equity across the district. We were going to negotiate additional time across all the schools. So I just don't understand why we would even start to determine again where we have, you know, winners and losers. So my feeling is, is we made the decision, just let it be. But that's... I'm just giving you my opinion as one member of the committee. Thank you. I yield.
It's just because it's a new committee and they have to plan for next year. So it would be good for us to let staff know, et cetera.
Okay, anything further? Oh, Ms. Larry.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Just a question on your... You mentioned in the center belonging and partnership. And just give me a little information on your responsive classroom strategies that you speak of in your...
Absolutely. So this foundation was brought into Laterno by Brian Reposo, a former principal, and we thank him for that. And it's been there for a while now. And so I think for us, as an RC school, the things that you... I would hope that you would see when you come in, you're going to see a really clear morning meeting every day that's going to welcome students, have students share out, have students be greeted, have a morning message. You're going to have teachers using reinforcing language. You're going to see, hopefully, logical consequences in the school. This could be something that's in the classroom in the tier one or even a tier two or if a student needs to be outside of the classroom. You're going to see a closing circle at the end of the day. And the idea is that, you know, we're... Our goal is to be uniform, where all of our teachers are using similar language and similar routines so that our students are pretty clear on the expectations and they're able to meet them. You know, my nude example is that, you know, everyone in our building uses a chime to gain attention, right? So that's just a small, you know, example of what you would see as it relates to a responsive classroom.
I like it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Next up is Watson and Fonzika.
All right.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Hoag first, from Watson, welcome.
Thank you, first of all, thank you for inviting me here to present about Watson Elementary School. My name is Celeste Hoag, and I'm the proud principal at Watson for the past few years. I'd like to talk tonight quickly about our priorities this year, the budget requests to help us keep moving our work forward. We're a two-unit school of about two hundred and forty-five students. This school year, our academic focus has been on academic discourse and rigorous tasks to help our students complete any unfinished learning, and that they have, and to increase their academic achievement. Additionally, we have strived as a school community to create an inclusive environment for all members to thrive, with a specific focus on SEL learning and outreach to our parents. We too have seen a positive uptick in attendance, specifically over February, with ninety-four percent overall attendance for the month of February, which has been a drast improvement. So far this year, we have seen positive results with regard to our targeted interventions in tier-two and tier-three instruction, and our overall tier-one core instruction. Those results have come in the form of recent ANET tests that we've take intermittently throughout the year. To keep moving the work forward, we're only asking for a couple of positions. The first position is an ELA lead teacher with a stipend of six thousand dollars. We believe that this lead teacher can help us by implementing our after-school programming that we've had up and running for the past few years, and implementing literacy-based family engagement activities. Also, like the other schools, we are asking for a community facilitator. We believe that this will help our outreach to families, not only with attendance, but also with strengthening that connection, and helping to meet the needs of our families, and getting resources to our families. We are looking to request a K-2 SEL paraprofessional to work directly with our school adjustment counselor in implementing in-class, so keeping the students in-class SEL interventions, so that their needs are met while still participating in academic learning. And then there's just one conversion, we do have an SEL para in the building. We're looking to specifically convert that to a grade-three-to-five SEL para, again, to work with the SAC, and implementing in-class SEL interventions for the upper grades. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
Ms. Rogics?
I'm just looking at the request, so there's only a half-time community facilitator?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering why not a full-time one?
We'd love a full-time one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so then I'm just wondering why not, if you could use a full-time one, and I'm just looking at, you've got ninety, almost ninety-four percent of your kids are high-needs students. Again, we've already talked about the absentee rate, but yours is higher. So if I'm looking at that, I would kind of, I would lean towards, it makes sense for me if there was more support.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Okay, I guess I'm just.
Mr. Agia?
Did you yield?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rogic.
It's fine, I yield, it's okay, it's okay. No, it's okay.
By mistake, Mr. Agia?
So I think, I guess it's not my place to, I'm not on the administrative side, but if I had to speak for them, I would assume that the reason why that's a half is because the enrollment's only two hundred and forty-one, forty students, even though they're high-needs, I don't think that it necessarily would support such a position being full-time.
Correct, and right now.
I thought he, I thought he cut you off, but I'm not gonna say that.
No, no, it wasn't, it wasn't, I said okay, it wasn't done on purpose.
And right now, we do have systems in place, like the other principals talked about, where attendance calls are made daily by our student adjustment counselor and our student support coordinator. If by eleven-thirty, I sit down to cover the clerk's lunch, and those, any calls are missing that you can see on X2, I make the remainder of those calls, so we do have very good systems in place, just like Tanzi, our nurse is hands-on, so our families are contacted, and a lot of times, I know somebody asks the question, do the parents pick up? Sometimes we text them, we have Google Voice, there were good learnings that came out of COVID. We have Google Voice and things like that, so we have lots of ways to connect with families.
I would say that the, personally, a student support coordinator in a school adjustment council, we should get rid of the student support coordinator title, my own personal opinion, and call it like it is, so that we're all knowing what's happening, because that's really the, they have different roles, but they're very similar roles, I'm not looking for you to answer, just, that's just my opinion.
I think we've talked about this in the past, and the way that we have defined those roles, and every summer, we've sat down as a, as an administrative team at school, and we've talked about where the overlap is, because there is overlap, but there's very specific differences. The student support coordinator does not serve as students on IEPs. She handles very much community-based, family-based resources, so it's two different roles. I'm, I wouldn't be in favor of getting rid of the title.
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds to me like that's exactly what's in the community facilitator description. Doing a lot of those things that that person might do, might actually be a need for not having a half a community facilitator, because with only two hundred and forty students, and a student support coordinator, there'd be an argument to be made for that, the .5 is not needed, but I'm not gonna, gonna go down that road, but. The, the request to convert a position, it just looks to me like you're requesting to add one instead of converting, like, I don't, when I see a conversion, I think of it as a position that's going away, and another one's starting, and this just looks like you're assigning.
It's more of a renaming, to be honest, there is an SEL para on the budget sheet, and so we're just looking to rename that, rather than just a general SEL para, or we're re-looking to rename it SEL para for grades three to five, sir.
Right, but we have, we just talked about the fact that a para is a para, so.
Right.
As far as we're concerned, that person doesn't need to be renamed, because we don't have a position called three-to-five SEL para.
We can assign the paras to whatever grade level we need them.
So it, it makes it look like as if you're adding additional one, like, in essence, I don't think you're adding, you're adding the third one, not the fourth one, so, with that, I yield.
Anything further for Watson, Ms. Larve?
Yeah, just a quick, is it fair to say that the .5 are gonna be shared, the community facilitator, between Tanzi and?
Most likely, yes.
The one position for both of these schools would be shared by that one staff member?
It'd be nice, because we have similar systems in place with our United Arts teachers that we share, and we have a good relationship, so.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Hoag.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Ms. Lisi from Fonseca.
Thank you, and good evening, I wanted to first thank the committee for having me here to represent the Fonseca Elementary School for the sixth year. Tonight's budget will be speaking in regards to some of the turnaround work, and continuing the turnaround work that we've been doing over the last six years at Fonseca, as well as some of the new initiatives that we need to continue to look at, the current data of what the need is of the Fonseca students, and see what we need to put in place. One of the things that I would like to focus on, attendance has definitely been one of the areas of concern at the Fonseca school since the beginning of the turnaround, both for teachers as well as students. We do have an active attendance team that meets weekly, we do have a parent outreach worker, a student support coordinator, two school adjustment counselors, an attendance officer, an office paraprofessional who is bilingual, our school nurse, as well as myself and the redesign coach that sit upon this team. We do follow the district protocol, but at the school level, we do have different systems in place that is tiered based on the student need, so when we're looking at students, we are looking at it sort of tiered as students that have been habitually chronic prior to COVID, and those students that are hitting that chronic mark now due to the COVID pandemic, and with those medical absences. So one of our focused priority areas has been on the student attendance, and so a lot of the supports that we've had built within the past few years at Fonseca have been able to contribute to our ongoing progress with attendance, and reducing the number of chronically absent students while increasing the daily attendance rate. So I do, as my fellow colleagues do anticipate, that when we do look at the numbers, sometimes we're looking at numbers of students that are unexcused at the school level, where at the state level, they don't always look at the unexcused, the excused absences, so. We do look at it at the school level to make sure that we are tiering the targets very specifically based on the student need. Other areas of priorities at Fonseca have been to really build independent learners for our students, really getting them to speak, speak about their thinking, ask questions, but also now turning it over into the written communication form, and that's across all content areas. Social-emotional, as well as behavioral priorities, have been just as important to Fonseca as the academic needs of our students. We've built a lot of supports in place, along with the student support system and support team at the Fonseca Elementary School, with the real focus on being able to have students, being able to identify, communicate, and regulate their emotions and needs in the tier-one setting. So over the last few years of turnaround, we've put a lot of supports in place with professional development, so now it's really taking it to the next level, and supporting the students in the individual classrooms. With that, I'll discuss some of the positions that I'll be requesting for this budget. So for this budget, we are looking at entering a year that will finally bring us to a full-four-unit building. When I started the turnaround at Fonseca, it was five units of each grade level K to five. We need, we knew that we needed to have a pre-K program for our Fonseca population of students, so that was one of the turnaround efforts. So this upcoming school year, we will now roll out our last bubble class in fifth grade, which would allow us to convert one of those fifth-grade mainstream classrooms to a fifth-grade foundational English-language learner SEI teacher, to support that full-four-unit model. That means it would be three units, K to five, of mainstream classrooms, with one of the four units being a foundational English-language learner classroom. With the addition of that foundational classroom in grade five, that would also include the request of a paraprofessional for that grade-five classroom. We have finally been able to have our four full-day pre-Ks fully enrolled, and right now, we have one full-time pre-K para for each of those classrooms, and one that floats amongst the four, that has been very helpful with absences. We are requesting three additional paraprofessionals, so that would add a total, that would have a total of two paraprofessionals and one teacher per pre-K classroom. Those pre-K classrooms are full-day classrooms with up to twenty students in each of those classrooms. Fifteen of those seats are regular ed, five of those seats would be for students that receive academic special education services, and some of those other fifteen students would receive maybe non-academic services, physical therapy, occupational therapy, or speech. In order to increase planning time for teachers, which was something that has been an ongoing identified area as developing, to help build the capacity of our teachers, and to help really put an emphasis on the STEM and hands-on teaching and learning that we really have been working towards building at Fonseca, one of the things that we've noticed is that in the K to three classrooms, where we have not departmentalized those classrooms, we're not necessarily seeing as much of an increase of the students being able to come up with that set of knowledge that they would need in third, fourth, and fifth grade to then be able to carry it over into the content area of science, and where they're being asked to apply some of those previous grade-level skills or concepts to more complex strategies, and as we're kind of experiencing this phenomenon, phenomenon sort of approach to learning science, we want to make sure that we are providing all students K to three with science classes that would also allow their classroom teacher to meet with the departmentalized teachers for additional support around the content areas. This person would also support all classroom teachers with hands-on support in looking at trying to get all learning to be able to be hands-on learning for our students, because we know that students, when they are able to work kinesthetically, as well as auditory, and have things provided to them in a multiple, multitude of ways that they are, their needs are best met. So this would be an addition, I'm sorry, a conversion of one grade-five classroom teacher, because right now we have five fifth-grade classrooms, so the second fifth-grade mainstream classroom would convert to a one full-time, full-time STEM teacher for grades K to three. In addition to that, we are looking at increasing the levels of supports for our students that are in the RTI process. Right now, in our school, we have two ELA interventionists, and so we are looking at adding one additional math interventionist to meet the needs of those students that are currently within the lowest twenty-five percent, that are not showing that same adequate progress as their peers. At this time, that concludes all of the requests for the budget for the twenty-three school year, and I'm open to any questions from the committee.
Mr. Agia?
Yeah, you had said, how many fifth-grade classes do you currently have?
I have five fifth-grade classes, all of them are mainstream classrooms, so there's no foundational students in fifth grade right now. In fourth grade, I have four fourth-grade classes, three of them are mainstream, one of them is a foundational. So as it has been since the beginning of the turnaround, it's just taking that group of students and rolling them up. So it would be a true four-unit school, three units of mainstream, K to five, one unit of foundational, K to five, with four pre-K programs.
Yeah, just when, you have two bullets that say you're gonna take the conversion of a fifth-grade class teacher? So in my mind, I'm trying to figure that out, of how, if.
Yeah, so one of the fifth.
If one of them is, so you're still gonna end up with four units, or you're still gonna have five?
I'll still have four units, it's just one of the teachers would have to then, instead of teaching, let's say, regular ed mainstream special ed students, or mainstream SEI English-language learners, they would be responsible for the foundational English-language learner strand.
Right, and that's, that's, I think, the part of why I believe that that's not necessarily even something that we need to have in a budget, because you have five teachers in fifth grade. As the principal, you're gonna just choose four of them to teach fifth grade, one of which is a foundational class, and you're gonna move another one, so in essence, you're not adding any teachers, you're just asking them to do a different task, is.
You're converting to a different position, though, she's converting to a STEM teacher, which is a different position. Specialist teacher.
And then the grade-five foundational teacher has different qualifications than the grade-five mainstream classroom teachers.
Right, so that's like for bumping purposes, or like where, who's gonna fill that role if they don't have the credential, I guess, is.
Correct, and so this only is asking for one additional FREA position, and that's the math interventionist.
Yeah, I see that, the one that you put, the four pre, full-day pre-Ks with the paras, this is a district question, are all the other pre-K classes gonna have that same?
Yeah, that's what we're doing with all the pre-Ks, they, a lot of, most of them had only one para, and we've been adding, as they've, we've added classes, we've been adding two paras to the pre-Ks.
But she's gonna have two plus?
I'll have two, I'll have two.
She'll have two paras in the pre-K.
So I, I currently have four pre-K paras, I'm looking for an additional three, so I have four pre-K classrooms, it would be two paras in each pre-K.
So you have four now? And you're asking for three?
I have five pre-K paras.
You have five now?
Yep.
I see, so it's, you have more than one.
Yeah, so one float.
One that bounces around currently, so you're gonna end up with the same, that's just an equality question, I think it's important to, to put that in perspective. The, I'd be curious when we see the data from, about the attendance and all that, because I think looking at that is gonna, as I'm seeing your numbers, I'd be curious to see all of the schools, but very, and particularly your school, based on the history of being on the, on the performing list, and that, so to see, because I think if I recall back, there was positions and tasks, plans, whatever you wanna call them, for Fonseca that were not necessarily being done in other places. So as the years go on, and we've tried these additional interventions and positions and the like, at some point, we get to be like, what was the result of that? And I think that's what I'm looking forward to seeing, so with that, I yield.
Anything further for Fonseca? Thank you, Ms. Lisi.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it, with that, thank you. I appreciate all the principals coming out to now, and, tonight, and making their presentations, I thought it went very well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, messed up, any new business come for the committee? I missed one. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perera?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?